All right. Oh, let me get. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Dania Beach Regular City Meeting on February the 25th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Wait. Here.
Commissioner Ramoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Yevakorm.
Thank you, City Clerk. We appreciate that. If everyone could now please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have presentations and special event approvals. We have Item 3.1, Request for Proclamation Approvals. Request for Retroactive Approval Mount Zion AME 116th Anniversary. That took place on Sunday, February 23rd. Proclamation requested by me. We also have Women's History Month, March 2025, sponsored by me. We also have American Red Cross Month 2025, sponsored by me. And we have Irish History Heritage Month 2025, sponsored by Commissioner Ryan. Next, we have Item 3.2, Annual Broward County Cleanup Waiver. Oh, yes, sorry. Can we have consensus for the special event and proclamation approvals? Okay, thank you, Commission. Next, we have Item 3.2, Annual Broward County Waterway Cleanup Waiver Fees. Do we have consensus? Okay. Then we will move on to Item 3.3, City Manager Presentation of Our Very Own CFO. Oh. I don't have her on here. I'm missing it. Oh, I am missing it. I'm missing it. We have Item 3.3, Congresswoman Debbie Watson and Schultz Women's History Month Event for March 15th. We did talk about the fee waivers and so I don't know if the Commission wants to go ahead and sponsor that. Commissioner Llewellyn?
So, thank you, Mayor. I have a concern with this. There's literally no backup as to why they need the fee waiver or why they're requesting it. We don't know, do they want us to sponsor it? Do they, are they honoring Dania Beach residents? We have no backup whatsoever. So I have some concerns about this. And I think if we're going to cover an expense like this for a new facility that's been refurbished, then we need to have something more than just an invoice.
Well, I agree with you on that, Commissioner Llewellyn, because I believe this is the second or third request that we've had and I don't want it just to become automatic that we're just going to give fee waivers because people request them. So if they come to the table with backup and we see a legitimate reason for sponsoring that from the Commission, then I agree with you that they should have the documentation to support that. So.
I don't know if you may make a motion to deny it or to seek further information?
Yes, deny it until we get further backup or documentation to support the request.
I'll make a motion to deny it for that reason.
Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Ramoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion is denied for the waiver for IT Parker from Congresswoman Debbie Watson and Schultz, pending further documentation. Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. And now, we have our Item 3.3, A Presentation by Our. Well, I gotta get the right paper. My paper. I got, I got, I got the official. My paper's different from you guys. So, we have Item 3.4, A Presentation by Our City Manager to CFO Frank DiPaolo. Thank you, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, wonderful residents of the great city of Dania Beach and our special guest today. I would also like to welcome Bradley and Mrs. DiPaolo Uluna that's here. Before I make this presentation, today's kind of bittersweet. Bitter in that we're losing a great team player. Sweet in that I recruited this young man and like an eagle, he has flown. And now he's going to be leaving us and he's going bigger and higher. And really, the sky's the limit, like the eagle. Nobody flies higher than the eagle. So when I became the manager in March of 2019, a couple of weeks later, the then CFO comes to me and she said, "Manager, it's so great that you're here, but by the way, I'm going to be retiring in a couple of months." So immediately, I had to go into recruitment mode because you just can't hire anybody to be a Deputy City Manager or Department Director. To me, building great teams is what I take great pride in. So I asked her, "So who's out there as a professional finance director?" "Well, there's not too many people that I know that will meet the standard that you want here for our city, but this gentleman, he used to work here, but he's in another city. He may be happy." I said, "Give me his contact." Long story short, back in the fall of 2019, September of 2019, to be exact, I met Frank for the very first time in the city he was working in. Because that's what you want me to do? You want me to steal people from other cities? We sat at a Starbucks and at hello, I knew that I would do whatever it would take to ensure that Frank DiPaolo would become our next CFO. He came to us during a very challenging time, but during a time that we were experiencing a renaissance of sorts. I remember going to then Mayor Lori Llewellyn and saying, "I believe I found somebody very special." And today, we bid him farewell, but he has left a great footprint here in our city. Because just like today, you saw the investment of a million dollars in historic preservation. You see unprecedented investments in public safety, in parks, in infrastructure. Every, every area of our city has been touched by great investments and great decisions and great leadership. I just hope that his new boss and the folks that he's going to be working for in the private sector take care of him like you all have allowed me to take care of my team. And having that balance of work and life, because Uluna, Bradley, Frank loves you guys very much, very, very much. So today, as we bid him farewell, one of the great things he's done is that he has prepared his successor. And that's extremely important because I always talk about the team and I always talk about the seamless transition. So the fact that I don't have to, like I did in 2019, go recruit and go steal somebody because we have somebody right here at home that he has trained and he has developed. So it's going to be seamless with Jamie Guzman as our next CFO. So when I was thinking of what to give Frank, I thought about the Heisman Trophy. I thought about an Academy Award type of thing. But then I went back to the eagle because it really represents rise and it really represents who we are, who Frank is, and what I know and who I know he will continue to be. So this is presented on behalf of myself, our Deputy City Manager, all our Department Directors and all of you to our beloved Frank DiPaolo, our Chief Financial Officer. In gratitude for your leadership, your dedication and your commitment to excellence. We will never forget you. We're just a phone call away, so don't forget us. God bless you. We love you. So please, a hand for our CFO, Frank DiPaolo.
Quick photo? Right here in the podium with Heisman?
My Oscar.
Your Oscar?
Thank you, Manager. It does feel kind of like the Academy Awards. So Ralph, don't play that music. I'm going to keep talking, okay? Don't play me off. And I really do appreciate the warm sentiments. It's been amazing last few weeks here. So if you could indulge me for a minute, this will probably be my last time speaking at this podium as I've done so many times in the past five years. I've been in public service since I walked in that door, June of 2006. I had no experience. I was working on my master's. I was hoping to become a CPA. I was only married for a few months. My son Bradley wasn't even born yet. And here I am now, over 18 years later. I'm finally reached legal age in government. And I'm proud of my accomplishments. I'm hopeful that I left a legacy of success and prosperity in the city of Dania Beach. I'm honored to have been inspired by the wisdom and experience of City Manager Anna Garcia. Thank you for that meeting at Starbucks. It was a great ride the past five years. And I'm ready for this new adventure because of you and the lessons that I learned along the way. I appreciate all the relationships I've built with my colleagues. It's been amazing to be a part of all of their accomplishments, which are truly outstanding. No city is doing what Dania Beach is doing right now. You know that. I'm humbled by the growth of my team, especially our IT Director Daryl McFarlane, Procurement Manager Sasha Ramos. We brought both of them in and trained them and they're doing amazing things. And of course, Jamie Guzman, the next CFO for the city of Dania Beach. Most of all, I'm grateful for the love and support of my family, Uluna and Bradley. They inspire me to be a better husband, a better father and a better man every day. And they're by my side every step of the way. So I love you both with all my heart. Lastly, thank you to the City Commission for always entrusting me to lead the city's finances with great ethics, integrity and a spirit of optimism. The city of Dania Beach has a bright future ahead and I wish all of you continued success, prosperity and of course, good luck. It's been my pleasure to serve you all. And with that, I want to close with a quote. "Life's short, but it's the longest thing you'll ever do. So give more than you take and be kind." Thank you very much. I'll cherish this always. Thank you.
Yes, Frank, we want to take a photo, a group photo with you. Yeah. Thank you, City Manager, for that wonderful presentation. If one person deserves that recognition, it is Frank. I'm going to miss the budget and briefs and all the stellar work that he's done, but we truly, I mean, wherever you go, you hear Frank's name because he is just that great. So we miss you and we will never forget you. And congratulations to Jamie because we know that she's going to do a stellar job for the city. And next up, we have our Item 4, Proclamations. It is Irish American Heritage Month and it is presented and sponsored by Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, everybody. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor from the City of Dania Beach, Florida, and it was requested by me, Commissioner Archibald John Ryan IV. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's War for Independence. And whereas five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent and three signers were Irish-born. And whereas the city of Dania Beach is home to a vibrant and thriving Irish-American community whose members have made significant contributions to the cultural, social and economic life of our city. And whereas the month of March has been recognized as Irish-American Heritage Month since 1991 and it's providing an opportunity to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Irish-Americans. And whereas many Irish families settled in Dania in the early 1900s, including the Ryan family, and continue to provide leadership and service to our nation's political, business and religious establishments. And whereas the Irish-American community in Dania Beach has preserved and shared its unique cultural heritage through various activities and events, including music, dance, language and food. And whereas the city of Dania Beach celebrates the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, Joyce Davis, Mayor of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Irish-American Heritage Month in the city of Dania Beach and encourage all citizens of Dania Beach to honor and recognize the significant contributions of Irish-Americans in our city, state and nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for that proclamation. Next, we have our Administrative Report, Item 5.1. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give an update as many of you that were there today. We cut the ribbon on the historic Nyberg Swanson House and we're extremely, extremely excited about that. But we also wanted to give you a brief update on the Women's Club, which is right next door. So the bid advertisement for the restoration of the historic Women's House will go out next month. The bid award will occur in May. We will commence the restoration and the construction sometime in July. And we look forward to coming full circle and cutting the ribbon a year from next March. So we are looking forward to that new project that is moving forward. And we're going to be meeting soon with the members of the Women Historic Club. And it's just a great time, a great, great time to be part of the city. I also want to brief you just very slightly because I know the Mayor and Commissioner Ramoli will be talking about our trip to Tallahassee. But this is the official document that was prepared by our Public Services Department that are really our legislative priorities that we take to Tallahassee every year, which is our stormwater system upgrade, our Northwest Second Street, a water main replacement in the Arts and Entertainment District and our Dania Cove Park. So we spent a great, great couple of days in Tallahassee and it was really non-stop as our Mayor and our Commissioner will allude to. And we look forward to continuing to work and hustle and advocate to get a piece of that state pie that belongs to our city. We realize and we were informed by our Speaker of the House that it's going to be a very tight budget up in Tallahassee, but we couldn't be better prepared. And I want to thank the Mayor and Commissioner Ramoli for being up there with me in Tallahassee. Her communication with FAU, Florida Atlantic University. One of the things that I wanted to communicate today and really commend our City Attorney because we have a vision and we find an opportunity and then we pass the baton and until we come full circle, we don't stop. But a year and a half ago, the Deputy Manager and I were driving around trying to find solutions to the parking challenges we have in the beach, particularly over the weekend. So we took a look at FAU and we saw an empty parking lot. Long story short, we have 100 dedicated spaces. And now, just two weeks ago, our City Attorney was able to seal the deal and we're going to be using some of those spaces there to provide valet parking for our new Lucky Fish Restaurant. And I don't know if you all have seen the Mayor on the Move going out of order here, but it's a new initiative as we strive to provide more communication and get more information to you. But the Mayor on the Move is going to be, it's a project that we initiated last week and it's really going off the charts to be able to let you know what projects we're working on and what's coming forward in our city in regards to construction and initiatives. So we're very, very excited about that. We are also identifying an additional 40 parking spaces in our campus at the beach and 60 parking spaces that are in Hollywood property. So we're looking to identify more opportunities. We will also be meeting with the CFO of the casino to be able to create parking spaces there and create a shuttle for the employees of both Lucky Fish and also the quarterback. Just we continue to think outside the box, deal with challenges and deal with those challenges in a very productive way. Earlier today, I had an opportunity to speak with one of our constituents and I wanted to give you an update. If you see a series of city lights that are not working, let me tell you what's occurring. So it seems like the copper in the lights are now something that thieves are looking into. So we've had the copper being stolen from some of our city lights. We have a contractor that is working to restore these. Additionally, we're going to be installing cameras. So if anybody thinks of stealing copper from our lights, you are going to get busted. But I want you to know that the city lights are our responsibility. Now the traffic lights, that is the county. But I just wanted to let you know, sir, that we got an update and we have a contractor working on that copper. But yeah, I just wanted to find you the solution even before you ask the question, sir. My pleasure. It's a pleasure, yeah, to steal the copper from the lights, sir. So that's the issue that we've been dealing with, the lights that you see that are not working, sir. But don't you worry, we're on top of it. The question being asked is who will occupy the Nyberg Swanson House? And we have, we have the Historic Society that has been doing fantastic work. The Chamber used to be there, but at the end of the day, it will be the decision of our Mayor and our City Commission. And I know that they're going to be discussing in regards to some presentations, but we're very, very excited and we know that there's great ideas out there, but we want to make sure that we make it official and that has to come from the vote and the guidance that the Commission will give me. The new bathrooms for Ocean Park are in the design phase. So we're very, very excited. We will have brand-new bathrooms, just a series of brand-new buildings, new parks, new facilities. We're very, very excited that that is in the design phase. We also completed the milling and the paving project south of Ocean Park. And the beautiful beach park is looking beautiful. If you haven't been to the beach, go check it out. The marina is under new management. The park, the park to the outdoors is just looking beautiful. So go and enjoy it. And pretty soon, we're going to make an official announcement for the new, new and exciting project over there, the Lucky Fish Restaurant that's going to be opening in a couple of weeks and the Mayor will be giving you more information on that. The City Team is currently involved in multiple drainage projects across the city. It's an unprecedented investment in storm drainage projects. So you have seen the shovels in the ground in the southeast drainage, out in the west, out in the southeast. So we are going to be giving you an updated report, but we wanted to let you know that our storm drainage master plan is coming to a conclusion. It's the first ever storm drainage master plan. But this is what helps us get the points and get the money from Tallahassee because all our projects have a match from the city. All our projects are shovel-ready. So it's a very, very exciting time. Couldn't do it without our Public Services Department, our Deputy City Manager and our team that's working so hard and so smart. More than working hard, you got to work smart. City Hall Exterior Improvements have commenced. As you can see, we're going to be working on a park right next door. It's going to be our future Veterans Park. We are a couple of weeks away from the ribbon cutting at a beautiful facility that will have 99 brand-new units. The city has committed to have a balance of all types of housing, including affordable housing. So we're going to be cutting the ribbon on that soon. And as you see, the construction is to provide that connectivity so people living adjacent to City Hall can come and walk at City Hall, enjoy our parks. They can walk their dog in a safe environment. We've installed lighting all over our campus, so it's going to be safe and wonderful. And we're looking forward for the second phase, which will be our Veterans Park. Southwest 52nd Street Drainage Project, that project is in substantial completion with the road restoration expected to be completed by the third week of February. Southwest 34th Court Drainage Project, construction work will begin in June of this year. Ocean Park Restrooms, these new fully updated restrooms on the north end of Ocean Park will replace the old restrooms adjacent to the east side of the beach. And the former restroom facility will be covered into much-needed storage. So we're thinking outside the box. Everybody's working in unison and we're just bringing the city forward. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. My pleasure.
Thank you for that very thorough report, City Manager. And now we will move on to Item 5.2, City Attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just focus my report at the end for 12.1 relating to the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. And next, we will have our Public Safety Reports. Sorry, sorry, City Clerk. City Clerk, our City Clerk is up at next 5.3. City Clerk Reminders.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Your next meeting is scheduled for March 11th and it's at 5:30, beginning with your CRA and then 7:00 PM for your City Commission meeting. And then following that is the March 31st meeting. Just remember that it's been moved from the 25th to the 31st and that'll begin at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, City Clerk. And now we will have Item 6, Public Safety Reports by our very own Captain Jason Tarala.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Earlier last week, we had a incident over at the Bass Pro Shops. We were working with their loss prevention team on their surveillance system and we identified three individuals who were stealing from inside the business. We watched them leave the business and once we stopped them, we were able to positively identify them and we were able to recover the stolen property. One of the stolen property was a firearm from inside the Bass Pro Shops. All three subjects were charged. One individual was charged with felony petty theft. He had two prior convictions. The second individual was charged with petty theft, obstruction, grand theft of the firearm, tampering with evidence. And the third subject was charged with petty theft, obstruction, four warrants. And he also had 13 warrants, including possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, burglary, fraud and criminal use of a personal ID. So that was a very good arrest out of the Bass Pro Shops and we were able to recover all the stolen property. An incident I wanted to bring to your attention was about six months ago, many of the Commissioners and many of the residents brought to my attention an issue going over at our postal service. Many residents were complaining that their checks were being stolen. Many residents were complaining that their checks were being stolen. Commissioners came to me that they were getting calls from residents. So we immediately began a undercover operation, working with the United States Postal Service and working in conjunction together through our strategic means and our investigative means. We were able to identify a suspect who was a employee of the postal service working there. Through our investigation, we were able to put together our case. And last week, we were able to follow him once he left work and we did a takedown of hand, replaced him in custody. At the time of placing him in the custody, we actually found over 50 pieces of stolen mail, including checks issued from BSO, many residents of Dania Beach. At this moment, as our investigation is ongoing, we have recovered a value of stolen checks of over $500,000 as this individual has taken from our postal service. So this was a phenomenal arrest. It was a partnership with the postal service. So I do want residents of Dania to know that this was really important, that we got this gentleman in custody. So please know that if you do use the postal service here and you were a victim, that will not happen again because that individual has been arrested and taken into federal custody. Also, some good news, our two new sky towers that we ordered last year, they will be here on Monday. So they will be here for spring break. We have to get trained in them. But our team will be trained in them next week, so we will have them deployed to start with in Dania Point. And the other one will be deployed on the beach for our spring break and we can move them where we want. But for sure during spring break, one will be on the beach and one will be in Dania Point. And you cannot miss them. There will be beautiful four cameras assigned to them, 360 movement. So they will serve as a deterrent and capturing everything within their range. So they will be out there. And also, I want to let you know that we have our spring break operational plan set to be going on for our beach, for the Broward County Schools that will be out, as well as Miami-Dade and Palm Beach. So we'll have a deputy assigned to the beach the entire 10-day period. We will have a deputy on the beach assigned. They will not be able to leave the beach. And we obviously have our spring break operational plan in place for Dania Point to address the large amount of crowds that are, we anticipate to be coming onto the property. So all that's in place. And that's all I have for this week.
Thank you, Captain. That was a huge arrest and, you know, we've been hearing so many stories about that. So thank you and your team for all that you do in keeping our residents safe and financially sound. I appreciate that. All right, next we will have our guests. And now we have our own BSO Fire Chief, Sergio Pelissero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city staff, city manager, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. So over the last couple of weeks, every member of our team on the fire department has been training on caring for seniors and our elderly population. Even though we go through paramedic school and we learn all this, we always bring in professionals from the outside of our community and make sure that we have the latest tools in taking care of our seniors and doing our job. Our crews have also been participating with Memorial. As you know, we transport a lot of our patients to Memorial. So we do training with the ER staff and the staff at Memorial so that we're both on the same page when we're taking care of our patients. So, the most important thing I could tell everybody and all the citizens out there who are listening and watching. Please make sure if you have a vulnerable, somebody that meets the vulnerable population, basically meaning that you are going to need help during a hurricane, during a storm, you're going to need help at any point. Please sign up for the vulnerable population. Make sure that you go on our city's website's on there. It's also on the Broward County's website to make sure you sign up. We get a list and that's one thing that our fire department does is we go out there and check, make sure that you're going to have the resources to get out safely or be moved somewhere safely. So that's the most important message I can bring to our community tonight to please make sure you sign up for that. Our crews participated with Tri-Rail Fund Day this past weekend and kept everybody safe there. And September 11th, we're getting ready for September 11th. We have an annual commemoration that we started a few years back. This year, we're going to do something special. We're going to bring all the old pictures. Going through them now, we're going to make sure that we set up some walls inside our fire station. Not only for our firefighters to look at, our current and new firefighters, but also when you come and look the tour of our fire station on September 11th, you'll see the past, the present, and the future. So with that, if you have any questions?
No, thank you, Chief. We really appreciate that and look forward to it. And next, we have item 7, Citizens Comments. I do want to reiterate, if you are here for item 10.1 or 10.2 or 12.1, to hold those comments until that item appears. Right now, we're just going to do general citizens comments. And up first, we have our very own President of the Historical Society, Ms. Joanna Grenet.
Good evening, Joanna Grenet, President of the Dania Beach Historical Society, 450 Southeast 7th Street. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. Obviously, the Nyberg Swanson House was, had their ribbon cut in today. And I just want to say a big congratulations to the city. It's an absolute amazing restoration. The house is beautiful. And as you know, for the last three years, you've had me coming up here with the Historical Society, pushing for the restoration. And you've done an amazing job. It's absolutely beautiful. And I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grenet. Truly an outstanding job. And thank you for, in the Historical Society, for continuing to show up to support that over the years. We appreciate that. And next, we have Mr. Eugene Bold. If you would come up and please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Eugene Bold, 3000 South Ocean Boulevard in Hollywood. So as I'm sure many of you know, for the past five and a half years, I worked with Commissioner Tim Ryan, AJ's uncle, in helping support what you all do at the county. Well, today I'm here on my own behalf because when I heard about today's event at the Nyberg Swanson House, I said, for the past five and a half years, I did my job and I did it because I believed that was the right thing to do. Today, I'm here because I want to support it, support your efforts, support all of the work that you have invested over the past five and a half years because it is the right thing to do. So I have a few comments to make. Dania Beach remains one of the most important cities in Broward County. In my opinion, it is the most important historically because it represents the origin of Broward County. Also, the origin of municipal government in Broward County. And with that, the Nyberg Swanson House is of course much more than a historic house. It embodies the immigrant experience, the economic development of Dania Beach, of political leadership and of historic preservation efforts that have shaped not just Dania Beach, but Broward County. And so because I have had the privilege of serving alongside Commissioner Ryan as his right hand at the county, and I've had the opportunity of working with so many cities, I have come to appreciate Dania Beach's determination to preserve its history because not every city does that. And if they do it, they don't do it as well as you do. So today was a testament of your efforts, of your focused attention to this issue, and of your intent to preserve for future generations what past generations have given us. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bold. We appreciate your comments. And next, we have Ms. Michaela McCanca. Hopefully, I didn't butcher your name. Conca. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michaela Conca, 1329 Northeast 7th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale. I am here to applaud the work and the beautiful restoration of the Nyberg Swanson House. I am president of Broward Trust for Historic Preservation and a personal friend of Joanna Grenet. So whenever there's been a project that she's been involved with, as she did work very closely with the city of Dania Beach and all of you, I always try to come and rah rah and let her know that I am in the background supporting her hard work and efforts. And I do want to commend Dania Beach for your future efforts for supporting historic preservation and trying to preserve everything that you have here as one of the oldest cities, municipalities in Broward County. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conca. We appreciate you. Yes, the oldest, yes. And next, we have Mr. David Wright. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
David Wright, 4161 Southwest 22nd Avenue, Dania Beach. I'd like to talk about incremental neighborhood improvement. And at Dania Cove Park, on the north side of Dania Cut Off Canal, there is a pedestrian access on the east side of that park only. Southwest 42nd Street and Southwest 25th Avenue is a cut-through route from Ravenswood to Griffin and vice versa. And it's a very dangerous road for pedestrians, especially at the 90-degree turn at the park. There is limited sidewalks on the north side of 42nd Street. And there's a sidewalk from Ravenswood Road to the end of the Habitat for Humanity Neighborhood on the south side of 45th Street. Could the city somehow connect this sidewalk to the Dania Cove Park, allowing pedestrians from the east to walk to the park in a safe manner? If you could do that somehow and incrementally improve the neighborhoods as we move along. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We will take those suggestions under consideration. We appreciate it. And next, we have Ms. Carmella Campbell, if I said that correctly. Carmeline.
Good evening. My name is Carmeline Campbell, and I'm at 1429 Nautilus Isle. And I have a request for speed bumps in my neighborhood. There are speed bumps in Malalooka Gardens in Vice Mayor's neighborhood. And I would like to request them in my neighborhood, like one or two on 14. And then we have cul-de-sacs, and I think that people drive too fast. And we're having more Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, and more people coming into the neighborhood renting Airbnbs and more people that are just inconsiderate. And more, the golf carts, driving around and speeding and all hours of the night. And also, I wanted to state that years ago, when I moved in there, there were yield signs. And I don't know if some of you have been around that long, of like 24 years, 25 years, 1998, if you were living in Dania, there were yield signs in that neighborhood on Nautilus, Florian, Argonaut. And there was some gentleman that was killed on a motorcycle because of the yield signs and somebody not yielding properly. And so now we have stop signs and people are going through them. And I just wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention and request speed bumps. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We will take that under advisement. We do appreciate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those comments. Our city manager is making copious notes over there. And so we will look into that and we appreciate your concern for your safety and the safety of your neighbors. Next, we have the consent agenda, item 8.3. Item 8, I have a pull, item 8.3. Does the commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 8.3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, I have a first, a motion and a second from Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So item 8.3, I just wanted to bring that one up because...
Can I read it?
Oh, yes. Please, City Attorney, if you would, please read item 8.3.
Thank you. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach adopting the amended parks and recreation schedule of fees and charges provided for conflicts and an effective date. This is a parking recreation item. And just for the record, on the daisism, amended fee schedule, it's only amended to reflect on one of the last items, that it's a weekly charge. So you know exactly what the charge is. It's for the, I think it's the swimming? This summer, this, no, it's the last one here. Oh, the junior lifeguard. Junior lifeguard.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. We do have our schedule and fees program with our summer camps and junior lifeguard camps. I wanted to just state a couple of things for the record before we voted on it because I do have concerns. I first want to acknowledge our Parks and Recreation Department, who does a stellar job with all of our summer camps. They have taken our parks to a totally new level. So yes, please give it up to them. I don't want you all to be at all confused or think that I have anything because she's done a fantastic stellar job. Our parks are working and on another elevated level, better than they have ever been before. So we thank you for the hard work. And I know that she worked diligently. Our Parks Director, Cassie Warren, worked diligently to look at all of the park fee schedule in the neighboring cities and compared the prices. And so some of these prices have gone up from what they were previously. And so it is in alignment with the surrounding cities in Broward County. However, I am aware that when we go to the grocery store, when I go to the grocery store, the price of eggs and all of our cost of living has also gone up. And so I understand prices go up. But I just believe that if we have the power to have the prices go up for non-residents, then we should pass that cost on to them and leave the cost for the residents as is. So that is, you know, my proposal. You know, that's what I would like to see. So if we need to raise the price by $20 for the residents, just pass that cost on to non-residents. It may seem simple, but I believe as long as we can do that, then that is something that I would like to do. I understand that the costs have to go up in some respects because we are elevating our parks on all levels. But if I can keep the prices low for our residents, then that's what I want to do. I also want to thank you for having the seniors have a free Wednesday. So on Wednesday, seniors will be able to go to the pier without paying. And I think that's a wonderful idea for seniors to be able to enjoy. So I always want to just maximize the benefits for our residents all the way around. So if we have any other discussion on that, then that is why I wanted to pull the item. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, just interesting that this came up because I actually have already made a request and they're in the process of vetting. As you know, every year, I usually ask for contingency money to go towards the summer camps for a certain number of students or a certain number of kids in each location. I'm working on the spring camp right now. So at the next meeting, hopefully on the consent agenda, there will be an item. Or I believe it's 10 for CW Thomas and 5. Thomas and five for P.J. Mealy. Frost is already booked. So, that's something also that we can do, and if anybody wants to join me on that, they can also throw out some contingency money for that, for our discretionary funds, because it's there for investment. And one thing we can do is invest in our children, so, but there are options for things like that that we can do as well, to try to assist within certain situations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I met with staff and the manager regarding these rate raises, and, you know, with, with us improving all of our parks and our programs, I think it is necessary to do a slight raise, and we won't have to come back and approach this for probably several years after this. You know, on, we're just doing a dollar raise for fishing on the pier. If you're visiting the pier, it's only, it's still $2 for residents and non-residents, and for our residents, it's only a $2 raise for the, for the camps. So, I wouldn't, I don't think that's, that's too much or too unaffordable, and like Commissioner Llewellyn said, we do have assistance for those youth that need it. So, you know, the fact, and we are by far the most competitive, and we're the lowest price city when it comes to those programs. So, I think it's necessary with the, all the improvements that we're making to do this minor raise, you know, i- it's raised a little more for non-residents, but I see it's definitely necessary, and like I said, it's something we don't have to approach for probably another several years after this.
I appreciate your perspective. Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion on that? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Make a motion to approve eight point three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, we call it to a vote.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Ramoni?
Sorry, it's coming.
No.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. All right. The consent agenda passes, and now we are on to our bids and proposals. Item nine, we have none. So, we move on to item 10, quasi judicial and public hearing items. Item 10.1, if you would, please read item 10.1.
Yes, ma'am. After I read 10.1, I will be swearing in any witnesses that would like to testify, including staff, and I will be asking for disclosures. This is a, I'm going to read 10.1 and 10.2 together, because really, they should be heard together. They're for the same property and the same applicant. We can have two separate motions at the end. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach approving the MVL plat submitted by the owner, Banyon Bay Marine Center LLC, for a property located at 4491 Ravenswood Road in the city of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts and effective date, and a resolution of the City Commission approving the Banyon Bay Site Plan submitted by the owner, Banyon Bay Marine Center LLC, for a property located 4491 Ravenswood Road in the city of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts and an effective date. Anyone who's going to be speaking, you don't have to rise, but can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now, I don't know if any of the commissioners have had any communications with any residents or the applicant or the lawyers for the applicant. If so, this is the time to do your disclosures of what the communication was, who it was with, and if you can remain impartial after the communication.
Well, I will begin. There was a public meeting at the library at the Dania Beach Palmeira Library. The, the developers were there, along with residents, to discuss this property. I was there and can remain impartial. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, I spoke with the attorneys for the developer, and I think the developer as well, the owner of the property, but I can remain impartial. Just, it was just basically showing me the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Ramoni?
Yes, I was also at the library for the presentation and spoke with residents, and I also spoke with their team in private, made a meeting here at the city hall, and I can remain impartial, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, disclosing that I met with the applicant and their team, and I can remain impartial. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. All right. Do I have a motion?
Can I, let the presentation go first?
Community development, sorry. I'm used to saying Eleanor. Go ahead, community development.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Viviana Batista, and I'm the Planning and Zoning Manager for the Planning and Zoning Division. So, today before you, it's the application for the plat note amendment, as well as for the site plan application for Bayon Bay Marine Center, located at 4491 Ravenswood Road. The property is, has an existing zoning district as IRM 8E, and it has an existing land use designation as commercial and low residential. The property is an 11.76 acres, and the existing use is a marina, and there are no open violations on the property. As you can see, the location is south of the Griffin Cut Off Canal, west of Ravenswood Road, just north of Griffin Road. The property, so there are two requests before you tonight. One is for the plat note amendment, which intends to rectify and clarify the limits of the use of the parcels, as well as amending the restrictions identified on the report, and also for the site plan, for the redevelopment of the site, which is an 11.6 acres, which are intended to fill in the basin and allow the construction for near industrial development with 169,286 square feet with 169 parking spaces. This is what they're proposing, which is basically two warehouse buildings with the base, loading base in the middle, and all the parking surrounding it, and the generous landscape buffer to the west, which actually will buffer to the west community, which is a residential area. These are some renderings of the project. As you can see, they're proposing a very modern style, and they're following the guidelines of the design standards from our code, and these are the existing conditions of the property as of now. So, we are adding some views of what's currently at the property. The applicant also met the, um, and enhanced, actually, the stormwater interim design standards, where the site plan identifies 29.8. The minimum requirement of the code is only 20%, so they're surpassing the minimum requirement. The application went before DRC us three times, and although they do have outstanding comments, they are meeting all the tier one requirements, as well as the budgetary impact. The plat note and the site plan will enable the site plan, the site for redevelopment and expand the city's tax rule. They also further the goals from the city's comprehensive plan, from the policies identified at the staff report, and they also, as you mentioned, did a community outreach. They not, they, they sent the notices for invitation, and they held a meeting on January 13. They answer questions from the community, which are identified in the staff report, as well as here, two of the main concerns, where the traffic throughout the neighboring community, because they're cutting through to get to the airport or the Port Everglades. So, the applicant is proposing to channelize all the traffic from the development going to, to move east, so it will be headed to Ravenswood, not through the neighboring community, as well as installing the digital speed readers for vehicles heading west. That way, you will notify them how fast they're going, as of the request of staff. Another concern from the community was the fact that it was an industrial development neighboring a residential community, and they proposed, as I mentioned, a very generous landscape buffer of 156 feet wide. And as of tonight, the Community Development Department is recommending approval of the resolution for the plat note amendment, as well as the site plan, providing that the comments are remaining as conditions of approval in the resolution tonight. The applicant and their representatives are available if you have any questions, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Would the applicant like to give a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff. My name is Tracy Slavens. My address is 3800 Northeast First Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33137. I'm happy to give a presentation. It's very similar to what staff showed, but I do have some additional renderings. If you would like to see them, I'm, I'm happy to take you through my presentation briefly.
Commissioner, do you wish to see it further? Any, and do you have anything that's different from any additional information, what community development presented?
No, Madam Mayor. We agree with staff's review and conditions on our approval recommendation. The conditions, we believe, are fair. We have worked very diligently to address all of their concerns, and as she said, we've passed the tier one review. The remaining comments are things that are typically addressed by permit or that will be addressed through our review of the plat note with the county. So, we're, we're very happy, and it's been a wonderful pleasure working with them.
Thank you so much. I do have some comments from the public, so we'll start with our public comments, and if there's anything that we can call you back up to address, but thank you for that presentation as of now. I have Mr. Thomas Heavy that would want to speak on item 10.1 and 10.2. Mr. Heavy, if you would, please come to the front and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Ma, Madam Mayor. My name is Thomas Heavy. I live at 4403 Southwest 24th Avenue, approximately two blocks away from this proposed industrial complex in our residential area. We already have industrial buildings and the traffic and the trucks that come from that, and the occasional lost truck that makes its way down our streets. Unfortunately enough, I live on a dead-end street with a cul-de-sac. Some of the other neighbors aren't so lucky. They get trucks that are stuck in the turns. As Mr. Wright had mentioned, about 45th Avenue and 20, or 45th Street, 25th Avenue, that's a very tight turn, and it gets kind of hairy. But the additional industrial complex in the residential area is really frowned upon. About 10 years ago, we looked at this area, and they wanted to build a rack and stack storage on the west side of the marina, which was shot down because of height restrictions due to air traffic. Air traffic is also a big problem in our area, but that's water under a bridge. If we can't build a rack and stack there and preserve the marina, what benefits to the neighborhood does an industrial park bring? And that's basically my stance on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heavy. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. David Wright, who would like to speak on item 10.1 and 10.2. Please restate your name and address for the record, please.
Dave Wright, 4161 Southwest 22nd Avenue, Dania Beach. Is this for both of them, or is this for the first one?
For both, they go together, yeah.
Okay, then, the Dania Cut Off Canal is, are they, what are they doing with the seawall, and what are they going to do to prevent the water from the property or thousand-year flood from going into the canal? The Ravenswood Road has a right-of-way, it doesn't have a seawall there, and it filters in there. How is this property going to prevent their water from going into the, the right-of-way for Ravenswood by the bridge there and going into the water? And right now, they have access on Southwest 44th Street, and I want to make sure that there's going to be no access from their property to that neighborhood there, with, it appears to be from the picture. When we had that meeting at the library, there was no engineer present, and 95% of my questions had to deal with an engineer, and there wasn't one there, and nobody could answer those questions. I thought that was very unprofessional. The light intensity, they got the airplanes landing there, and they put these LED lights on, and it just brighten, it comes out of the neighborhood. And the canal's there, and the fish and the turtles or whatever, people going up and down the canal, and across the canal is Rustic Inn, been there since I can remember, and I'm, you know, up there in age. So, how is that going to impact that? Is it a 24-hour operation? How is it going to not be a 24-hour operation? The noise that it creates, the smell that it creates, where is all that going to go? And I'm not saying they can't, you know, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it. I know it's their property, they can do what they want, but how can they just tone it down? It is a residential neighborhood. You are on the canal, and we do have a thousand-year floods. I know they follow all the rules, but we just had one, not even two years ago. And after a period of time, all those trucks, whatever they store in there, you know, I don't, just don't want it to go into the canal, because the canal is one of the last things we got. How far, where does their property limit from the canal? Are they going to build docks on the canal? Are they going to have boats on the end of the docks in the canal? Because of course, Rustic Inn is out in the canal, and if they go out in the canal, how is anyone going to use the canal? And the park is across the street, Boaters Park, which is a little bit of solitude for the lower end of the boating industry. And how is it going to affect that? Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. This is a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, is we have? Does the commission wish to speak on this item? Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, yeah, if no one has any further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 10.1 and 10.2.
Do I have a, have a motion from Commissioner Ryan? Do I have a second?
Well, I, I'd just like if the, if you could maybe address a couple of Mr. White's concerns. He has a couple of other concerns that I think should be addressed.
Yes, absolutely.
That maybe our audience doesn't know about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Madam Mayor, through the chair. So, the issues that Mr. Wright brought up were canal operations, the seawall, flood control, and nuisance such as noise and lights. First of all, the design plan aims to fill in the basin for the marina. It will take about $6 million worth of work to do that, but it's, and it's, you know, a large endeavor, but it's absolutely feasible. By doing that, that will close off the property, and by eliminating the boat traffic and boat storage that occurs on the property, you actually end up having an environmental improvement. We will be improving the soil on the property by bringing in clean new fill and cleaning up the, the pollution that has generated from the dry storage of the boats, which includes motor oil, battery acid, gasoline, diesel. All of that will be cleaned from the property today. By having less boat traffic, you have less pollutants, less noise in the canal and in the surrounding area, because you're eliminating all of that boat traffic that occurs every day, and the pollutants that come out of the boat, that also includes sewage from malfunctioning bilges. So, in, in that respect, it's a major improvement. We submitted a photometric plan, and the lighting will be controlled so that the light remains on the property and doesn't spill over. The canal improvements and, and filling of the property will also include seawall improvements, and our seawall plans will be raised up to make sure that any floodwater that comes onto the property during a rain event will be controlled on the property. We'll have a drainage system, and the property, including what you saw in the image that staff showed, there's a large retention area that includes a lake and greenery that's dry retention as well. So, all stormwater will be retained on-site. Nothing will spill into the canal, nothing will spill into the road, and nothing will spill into the neighboring properties. It is our goal to be a good neighbor. It is our goal to be a good neighbor. We believe that this project actually is going to be a quality of life improvement in the area because today, the property line has boats stacked up on it. With our improvements and our proposed project, you're going to have, as was shown, 156 feet of landscaping, green area and lake to provide a very nice buffer between the residential neighborhood and the industrial activities, which are pushed towards the east of the site and oriented towards Ravenswood Road. And as you also saw in the presentation that staff gave, all of our driveways will be channelized to feed the traffic eastward and there won't be signage in addition to the channelization of the driveways to make sure that the traffic stays out of the neighborhoods.
Were there any particular types of businesses that you plan on targeting to occupy that space?
At this time, because we are waiting for an approval, the site hasn't gone out to market yet for potential tenants. But we expect that there will be interest from businesses that are involved in the marine industry, businesses that use the airport and the seaport as either points of operation or points of import-export. There may even be aviation suppliers in addition to marine suppliers there to help support the activities at the airport. And hopefully, we have a list of Class A tenants that create jobs. It's our expectation that during construction, we'll create approximately 200 new jobs. And during the permanent operational phase of the warehouse facility, we'll have 100 to 150 new jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yeah, just real quickly about the channeling of the traffic. And I don't know if somebody from planning and zoning or Community Development can answer this as well. We've had some projects in the past where there's supposed to be channeling of the traffic and then something happens and it doesn't happen. So do you have a backup plan for that or is there something else that can be done in the event that that does not occur?
So that was actually one of the comments, Tier One comments, staff brought up to the developers to make sure not only they had the painting on the pavement, but actually the curving of the exits is to channelize all the traffic just to go out and have all the signs posted to make sure all traffic goes left, I'm sorry, goes east. Yes.
Okay, so there is a plan in the event?
Yes, yes. And we made sure everything was curved to go to Ravenswood.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing that was suggested to us was to reach out to Google and Waze and provide a truck route to them to ensure that when someone is exiting the property and they type in whatever address they're going to, the app takes them eastbound to Ravenswood. And we're, our traffic engineers here this evening, but what we'll do is coordinate those truck routes with Waze and Google Maps to make sure that hopefully it directs people away from the residences.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a second? Commiss- Commissioner Llewellyn? I have a second from Commissioner Llewellyn. Madam Clerk, would you call it to a vote?
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Romoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slavina?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Commission. We are on to Item 11, First Reading Ordinances. We have none for this evening, so we are on to Item 12, Second Reading Ordinances.
Would you like me to read the title?
Yes, please, Eve, if you would, please read Item 12.1.
Okay. It's an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach to amend Chapter 16 Vacation Rentals of the City's Code of Ordinances by amending 16 to clarify advertising prohibitions for vacation rentals, defining vacation rental occupancy and specifically referencing the city's noise ordinance, provided for conflicts, codification and an effective date. This is a City Attorney Community Development item. And as I'm part sponsor of the item, would you mind if I just give a little presentation, please?
Yeah. Excuse me, if everyone could please exit quietly as we continue the meeting. Thank you.
Oh, I think we needed to, we wanted, yeah, they did. I'm sorry, I got a text message. We did a motion, one motion for 10.1 and 10.2. Okay. Thank you for your patience. I wanted to just start with what is vacation rentals? And I think we all know what they are. It's basically the ability to rent a single-family home, a duplex or up to a four-unit complex for treatment, sort of like a hotel, right? The state of Florida, let me, we go back a little bit. So when vacation rentals started becoming popular, the city adopted a code for regulating vacation rentals. And that code is about five pages long, single-spaced and gives a whole bunch of different regulations relating to vacation rentals. The good thing is, when it was adopted in 2012, it required a minimum five-day stay. So you can't rent it for less than five days. Why is that important? Because after we adopted that ordinance, shortly thereafter, the state legislature changed the rules on government, local government. And no other cities could pass rules relating to the length of stay or prohibiting of vacation rentals in various zoning districts, for example, single-family home districts. So we got lucky, we were grandfathered in and that we can keep that five-night requirement. Many cities don't have that and they can't implement it. But what the state law preemption also did said, we can't stop vacation rentals. So we have the five-night requirement, but we can't prohibit vacation rentals. So we all have to deal with this situation of where some people really like vacation rental because they can earn some more money out of these homes. And many residents are worried about their quality of life. And I can honestly say, in talking to the elected officials, I believe all the elected officials are concerned about the quality of life of our residents. So there are three things that the city is trying to do tonight. And I think two of them are not controversial at all. And I think everybody else is here on the third one, so I'll go into that one last, okay? The current code, Chapter 16, basically says that every vacation rental person who's going to be occupying the unit is to get a copy of our code on vacation rentals. So in the spirit of that, I wanted to have everything in one location. And as we know, we've spent a lot of time in the past year or so dealing with noise, the noise ordinance and enforcing the noise ordinance. We made it more stringent. So for example, from 11 o'clock on, we have a zero tolerance about noise, zero tolerance. And the rest of the time is 100-foot distance, meaning after 11 through 7 o'clock in the morning, it's zero tolerance, the rest of the time it's up to 100 feet. Okay? But we put that section into the vacation rental, so it's all in one place. So when the renter gets the code, they have it right there, what the hours of noise are and that they cannot make noise beyond 100 feet for most of the day. And at night, after 11, it's a zero tolerance. So I don't think that's controversial. The second item that we did was because we have a five-day rental policy, meaning no vacation rentals under five days. We, one way we enforce that is by checking Airbnb or V-Bro or what are these other entities are for vacation rentals and see what the advertising is. And if they're advertising for one day, two days, three days or four days, we consider that a violation. Somebody challenged us and I said, no, you know, you can't prove from that that we're actually renting for one day, two day, three day. So I said, okay, let's make it a violation of our code that if you are advertising for one day, two day, three day or four day, less than the five days, minimum five days, you are going to get a ticket that's going to run every day. And the reason for that is because that's an easy way for somebody to try and break the rules. If they can't advertise for less than five days, then anybody who wants to rent for one day, two day, three days or four days will not be shown your house. So I don't think that change is controversial. Let's go on to the last one. I want to make clear, nothing is changing as to how we implement the code. This was made as a clarification because there has been at least one resident who has disputed how the city is enforcing its code and how it defines occupancy under Chapter 16. And our code enforcement officers and our police officers are put in the spot of having to constantly explain, that's not what we're doing. So this was a clarification made to the code, and this is what it is. Our code currently says maximum occupancy of a dwelling unit for vacation rental use shall not exceed two persons per bedroom plus two persons, but no event shall the total occupancy of a single vacation rental dwelling unit exceed 10 persons or violate the minimum housing standards of Chapter Eight, building of the code. Now, Chapter Eight is basically, when you look at it, it's like you have to have screens on your windows, there's a whole bunch of regulations on the maintenance of the building to make sure it looks proper, painting, electrical circuits, you get the idea. As far as the 10, that means the rental agreement should have no more than 10 persons and should be identified in the eventual agreement. It doesn't mean that you can't have somebody come and visit you. Just like you and your home, your home may have a certain amount of space, but you can have a party, you can have, you know, watch the Super Bowl and have some friends over, whatever it is, as long as you're not violating anything else in the code. So what does that mean? Every site plan has for a vacation rental, when you do the request to operate a vacation rental, you have to have a site plan. The site plan has to put all of the parking in there and they have to park in those spaces. It is not authorized under the city code to park in the swale. So if somebody is parking on a sidewalk or on a swale, that is a violation. You call code, you call the police officers, report will be issued, violations will issue. Because we've enhanced the noise code, if there are any sounds after 11 o'clock, call the police, call code any other time, you get your violation for that. And it's an automatic violation. If it's a trash and debris, there is a way of enforcing that. So the city's not looking to try and change anything. It was a clarification to ensure that, you know, we all understand, we're not going to police whether you have 12 people at the pool during the day or 14 people over for dinner. The point is, if you're violating noise, you're going to get a violation. If you're violating parking, you're going to get a violation. And if you, you know, are caught with more people overnight, there will be a violation. And thank you, I didn't even think of addressing that. So if a property becomes problematic, it's after a certain, at least three violations, it goes to the city manager who can, does an evaluation of the property and can revoke or suspend the vacation rental. So that's already in our code. I hope that answers the questions and I know, I see a hand, but let the commission go and then the public comment section will open.
So this is a public hearing and I have several requests to speak. And we will start with Ms. Christine Douglas. If you would come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again. Christine Douglas, 4665 Southwest 38 Terrace in Davis Isles. I appreciate you very much clearing up the miscommunication that our neighborhood had received. However, you did mention that if one of them has more than one, many violations, I do have an address if you could look into it. Because this one has many cases called on it because this house, one of my neighbors does have pictures documenting how the owner is violating DB code by having multiple families stay for less than five nights.
By the way, if I can, and then we do want the address, and I'm not trying to take your time, if you could freeze her time.
It's okay.
I just wanted to say, if you call it in, even if it's just a code, that way we can investigate and that way we can have the cases come forward. Thank you.
Okay. So the address for that particular house is 4500 Southwest 38th Terrace. So this house also does parking, blocking people's driveways, parking on the yards of other people. So this is a house that if you all could look into, it would be greatly appreciated. So the other concerns that my neighbors had was with the Airbnbs, with the speeding and the multiple cars and stuff. But I do appreciate you all clearing up the ordinances so I can pass that on to my neighbors. Thank you all so very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Next, we have Ms. Vicky Armstrong. If you would please come and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vicky Armstrong, 525 Northeast 2nd Place.
Hold the microphone down.
Okay. I lived in Dania Beach. I owned my home for about 13 years and I have an Airbnb on each side of me. In the beginning, Commissioner Lori Llewellyn got many phone calls from me. I'm easy, I'm an easy person, but we'd had rich kids staying there with the Bentleys and the Ferraris and tearing across the grass. We've had trash. We've had electronic music. For those of you that are a fan of electronic music, God bless you, I hate it. It was, it's crazy. So I decided something, I can't keep calling the city, I can't keep calling Lori, I can't keep asking for help. I'm going to pull the bull by the horns. I got to know the neighbor that owns the property next door and I got to know the neighbor on the other side of the property. And I decided I'm going to deal with them personally in a nice way. And I found, just like the old saying goes, you get more with honey than vinegar, you do. They were, they've been very respectful. I don't have any more problems in that, in that way, but not everybody has that. But I'm just here tonight to number one, learn a little bit about the ordinances and how everything works. And the other part of it is to suggest dealing with owners or property managers in a nice way. And you're going to get something done because the one neighbor, all his trees and all that stuff's coming in my patio, my dogs are eating the berries and I'm blowing it off. I got my own stuff to clean up, I'm not going to clean up yours too. So he's been, he lives in DC and his name is Gopa and he's, he's actually a very nice guy, a scientist, nice guy. And I said, I want to be a good neighbor with you. I wanted, I want you to make your money, that's fine, but you have to remember, I want you to respect me and I'll respect you. I tell him to trim the trees, he gets the trees trimmed. The neighbor that bought the house next door, which was Patty Hart's old house, he came to me and said, I'm opening an Airbnb, do you have any issues? I said, well, you probably had most of the issues because you have a two-story house with stairs and a balcony. Well, it wasn't two weeks after he owned the house, I'm letting my dogs out late at night and people are jumping off the balcony naked into the pool. Now, for some, they might appreciate that. They really weren't that good-looking, so I didn't appreciate it. But, so I called the owner and I said, Alex, you might want to know what these kids are doing at your house. I'm not saying that I was perfect when I was young, but I called him and he goes, Vicky, I appreciate that. And so he changed everything. He put new things in his contract, he has cameras, he has a noise leveler. So sometimes you can deal with it on your own. So sometimes you can deal with it on your own. That's all I'm saying and suggesting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong, and thank you for giving your experiences and showing how a good neighbors can work things out. Next, we have Ms. Brenda Chalifor.
Listen, I don't even know where to begin with this.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Brenda Chalifor, eight-one-four Northwest Tenth Avenue. In noisy Melo Luka Gardens, thanks to Fort Lauderdale Airport. And now Airbnb, short-term rentals. I'm confused about the change to the language. I really don't think we need it. You say someone challenged it. I'd like to be more aware of what that challenge was and what it had to do with. I don't understand why we're changing the language. We go to the city of Miami Beach and look at their ordinances all the time for good stuff. Well, there, what it says, maximum occupancy, ten, period. Ten. That's it. Why add that sentence? It, to me, we start off on the wrong foot because we have commercial enterprise and residential neighborhood. Guess what? City of Miami Beach has zoning districts for them. Why don't we? Just like you do for industrial, just like you do for hotels. Why don't we? City of Miami Beach does. City of Miami Beach has, um, what I consider outrageous fines. Good. They're getting better compliance. I don't understand. If we're trying to do what's best for the residents, let's do it. Why mess around with ten and visitors and, you know, whether you have your pajamas with you or not? I mean, come on. Who's going to police who's staying overnight? You really expect a deputy to walk in there and police that? Why write it? I'll challenge you later on it because you didn't do it. Why set yourself up like that? Again, if we're gonna bother doing something, do it right. Draw the line at ten. Look into rezoning. Look into giving us better tools. What tools do the deputies need? I haven't heard a deputy say they need anything. Or code enforcement. What is the problem? On top of that, the city of Miami Beach very clearly in their code says, the fines are the fines. The special magistrate has no discretion on those fines. Watch yesterday's magistrate meeting. Your magistrate says he can give any fine he wants. It's his prerogative. And I don't think that's what you intended. The fine is the fine. They go up, I know someone asked us the last meeting. They go up progressively to get them out of there.
Thank you, Ms. Chalifor.
No one's being kicked out.
Thank you. The city, city attorney.
Um, I just wanted to clarify some things for you because you said you didn't understand. No, I, I didn't, I wasn't trying to be ma'am. I, just so you know, I was the chief deputy city attorney in Miami Beach. So, so I wanted to tell you how their code operates. The ten occupancy is the same as ours, except you're right, it doesn't have the language I'm adding in, but it's implemented the same way we're implementing our code. If I can. That's one. Two, their fine schedule was struck down. I was there when they tried to implement it. And it was struck down as being egregious. The code only allows a certain amount, the state law, chapter one sixty-two, only allows a certain amount of funds. And so when they were trying to charge a twenty-five thousand dollar fine, the code was struck down. So I think that answers your questions as to that. And as to zoning, we can't change the zoning and we can't prohibit it in zoning. That is the preemption under state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Thank you, Ms. Chalifor, for bringing up your concerns. We do appreciate you expressing your concerns. Next, we have Derek Anderson. If you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening. My name's Derek Anderson. I live at four-four-nine-nine Southwest Thirty-seventh Avenue. And I'm a neighbor of Chrissy, lovely Chrissy. And I'm here to support what she's saying. We live across the water from the house. And when it was bachelorette parties, I was fine with it. But since it's gone into fireworks on the Fourth of July after eleven o'clock and people dumping garbage into the water across the way, and I can attest to the fact that it's very noisy after eleven o'clock. It's walking my lovely wife and myself up several times, frightening our dogs. It's been a mess. And there have been several different incidents that have gone on that I deem dangerous, that I would see as dangerous when they were kids having parties, disguises, robbers going around with fake guns. Their neighbor is a police officer, and there was almost an incident because he didn't know that they were just goofing around. Things like that happen all the time. And sometimes you see families there, and that's nice and that's fine. But a lot of times, it's parties. And it goes on into the night and becomes very disruptive. And people driving around, they use our cul-de-sac as a, as a race car track. And so whatever they bring to drive around in motorcycles, golf carts, et cetera. So it's, uh, it's very disruptive. And so I didn't know some of the things that you said, and I appreciate that. Agreeing with the lady here that maybe we can be more forceful in the way that we enforce these codes and police these things. It's hard for us to do it. To be honest, we can complain, et cetera, et cetera, but it's hard for us to kind of like enforce these things. So help from the commission, help from the city would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Aaron Miller. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, good evening. Aaron Miller, two-twenty two-twenty-four Southeast Sixth Street here in Dania. Good evening. Uh, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Madam's Clerk, Manager, and Madam City Attorney. Uh, I am a longtime resident here in Dania Beach, where I'm raising two sons who I might add love the summer camps.
Thank you.
You know, we, we do depend on them and we do appreciate them. Uh, I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposal, which seemingly loosens the occupancy restrictions on the existing short-term rentals and opens the floodgates for an unlimited number of visitors. We all know these sorts of commercial activities are not compatible with residential neighborhoods. They aren't new. We know what they bring, and they bring unnecessary traffic, people, and problems. The sort of land use we all know is not conducive to creating and maintaining the strong, close-knit communities we have here in Dania Beach. Now, I have firsthand knowledge of the problems these sorts of rentals bring. Just on my block alone, like many of the others in attendance this evening, there are multiple short-term rentals just on my block. I'm not talking about the neighborhood, just the single city block. Uh, we've had BSO out several times in the last year. There's massive parties, blocked streets, and we even had my driveway blocked by guests and their visitors treating my neighborhood like it's their own personal parking lot. Let's not get started on the amount of trash that they leave behind. Other speakers have mentioned that, and I'm sure many more will. Uh, the visitors, they have no vested interest in our quality of life. Many of the owners, they don't live here either or seem to care. Now, having codes are great, but the people staying there and their visitors, they don't get in trouble, and we're the ones that have to deal with it. Let's face it, we wanted to live next to the club, we'd move to South Beach or downtown Fort Lauderdale. Uh, allowing a large number of visitors, ten is a large number, and an unlimited number of guests only makes matters worse. I trust none of you want to live next to strip clubs, garbage dumps, frat houses, busy restaurants, or loud service centers, and neither do I. Please stop turning the neighborhoods into cesspools for parties, noise, trash, and insecurity. Now, allowing ten people to stay overnight is already too many. And there's no proposed restrictions on the total number of visitors at any time. Uh, all you'd be doing is inviting ridiculous parties on my block and the blocks of all the people here. This proposal just doesn't do enough to rein in the number of people coming in to trash our neighborhoods. And I would ask that any, you know, you call it a clarification, but I would ask that the restrictions actually be made more restrictive. Ten as overnight guests is too many, and an unlimited number of guests is just an undefined invitation for worse problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And at this time, I'm going to ask Frank Aiello to come up and state your name and address for the record. Frank? Are you still here? Okay. Then we will move on to Martin Lux. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Martin Lux. I live on fifty-four Southwest Fifteenth Street. I actually don't have all of it to add, so you said it all. You said the best. The only thing I can top it with was they were shooting porn right next, next to my house, and that's an Airbnb. And that happened. And I'm sick and tired of Airbnbs and allowing like, like having more than ten people there at the premise. Um, parking all over the place, parking in my driveway. I'm sick and tired of it. It's not very good for our quality of living, Airbnbs. We shouldn't even allow in Dania Beach. That's all I have to say. I mean, he said it all. And that, that they were shooting porn right next to my house, that's, that's, that's no nonsense. That's fact. That's for true. I even have my neighbor, he can back it up too.
Thank you.
That's how bad it is. So I'm sick and tired of Airbnbs.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Sean DeRosa. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Howard Clark, uh, with the Law Offices of Harzell, Ozeri, PA, on behalf of Mr. Sean DeRosa, four-O-T, four-O-two Southeast Fifth Street. I just wanted, before I start, to make sure the clerk has my letter for the record. I was emailed, but I just got it. Yesterday, I was at the magistrate hearing, and on January ninth, magistrate Hippler found Sean's next-door neighbors to be in violation due to occupancy. A rehearing, not on motion, but on Mr. Hippler, was scheduled for yesterday. And despite the evidence not changing, despite a police report indicating, and the police officer testifying, that twelve people were occupying the property, we had a debate about what an occupant means. So I would like to read two definitions, because yesterday I only had one, but today I have two, both from the Dania Beach Code. Section one point two, definitions and rules of construction, occupant. The word occupant applied to a building or land shall mean any person who holds a written or oral lease of or actually occupies the whole or part of such building or land. We had a disagreement on that yesterday. Section eight nineteen, code of ordinances, occupant, shall mean any person living, sleeping, cooking, eating, or in or having actual possession of a dwelling, dwelling unit, hotel unit, or rooming unit. We had this agreement, and for some reason, despite substantial competent evidence being found on January ninth that they were in violation, the ruling was overturned. Now, why are they changing the language in this? And it's exactly what I said, occupant is very defined. It's a tool that the cop, that the police officers can utilize when quality of life issues are occurring. For example, noise occurs, police officer, because it's not an emergency, rushes out there. Half an hour, forty-five minutes, perhaps the noise has stopped. And in this case, that was the instance. However, they can still utilize the tool to implement the, the tool of maximum occupancy to implement the code and to make sure the quality of life issues stop. It, this is not a first-time offense. This person that we were going against yesterday is not a first-time offender. Not even on the same vi- he was on the same violation multiple times, and still we failed. With the language that the commission is impending, well, actually, I'd like to go into how this specific business only, this is the only business that gets to redefine what an occupant is, which is dictionary definition is a person occupying the building. However, in the entire city of Dania Beach, this will be the only business that gets to define what an occupant is. Not restaurants, not hair salons, not nail parlors. Those people are held to the definition. Only, only Airbnbs would not.
Thank you. Mr. Howard? And at this time, I think that was it. Mr. Howard, was that? This, Mr. Clark. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So then we have no other requests or comments. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to speak for or against this item? Anyone who has not already spoken? You are allowed your time. No, have you already spoken on this item? You, you can come forward. Please state your name again and address for the record.
I'm Carmeline Campbell, fourteen-twenty-nine, um, Nyliss Isle. I just want to speak on this that I agree, and, and I'm in agreeance and support with everyone here against these violations of code and occupancy. It's ridiculous and outrageous, and I support everyone here on behalf of this. And it's disrespectful, and there's, the speed bumps, the traffic, the disgrace. And we need to put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. All right. We're going to move on to commission comment. Uh, does the commission wish to speak, have discussion on this item? Commissioner Ramoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Attorney Eve, on the, um, three items that are being changed, the third item being the most contentious apparently from what I'm hearing of this audience, is there any way to to correct that to make a maximum number to be ten only, rather than the ambiguous?
You could do that.
Okay. And I think if that were the case, I think that we would find some happy people here tonight.
So is that a motion? Commissioner Ramoni, is that your motion? Hold on.
That would be my motion, but I'm sure others want to speak on behalf of this as well.
Do you have any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes. Thank you. So, um, I know pretty much everybody here. Um, I think I've spoken with many of you over the last week about this issue and about information that was being presented outside of the commission meeting. And I think you all know how I feel about vacation rentals. If I could get rid of them, I would. The state doesn't let us do that. And I think I, I can actually speak for all of us, because I think we would all like to be rid of them because it has created a lot of problems, not just in Dania Beach, but all over Florida. Unfortunately, our, in Tallahassee, the legislators and the governor do not see that, see things that way. And every time a bill comes up to try to restrict or remove or do anything at all with Airbnb, with vacation rentals of any kind, it gets struck down. So we are in a position, which I think Eve did a very nice job of explaining, that we are in a position where we really can't do a whole lot. So we try to do some other things to try to mitigate this. And that is the noise ordinance. And the noise ordinance that was put together, we worked on for a very long time and found one that really is difficult to challenge. We should win if anybody does try to challenge it. We already have laws about how many cars and parking and that sort of thing. I've called on, I have three in my neighborhood, okay? And I live on a canal. So if there is somebody having a, a party down the canal, I hear it all the way down the other end of the canal. So I'm right there with you. And I, and again, I think everybody up here probably feels the same way. I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I, I think probably they do. But the problem is, is that people do need to live. But the problem is, is that people do need to live. This is something that is allowed. I think if you are somebody who has a large family, for example, and you have people over for dinner, maybe, you know, you have a regular dinner or Thanksgiving or watching Super Bowl or something like that. Wait, wait. Then you don't even know how many people are in the house, nine times out of 10. And if it doesn't bother you when that happens, you know, and I do understand that there are situations where it is bad because I've heard it. I've had to call, like I said. But we do have things we can do about the violators. But when you have a situation where somebody has a large family or they have a large house that can accommodate 10 people or more, it's kind of hard to tell people what they can and cannot do with their property when the law allows it. So the 10 occupants is actually the people that are spending the night, correct?
Correct.
That's the maximum. As far as enforcement, I don't know how we enforce it. Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me.
We're not going to have, we're not going to have a back and forth from the, we have to have it. Mr. DeRosa, I'm going to ask you to please respect the rules and the decorum of this commission and this chamber. Commissioner Llewellyn, please continue.
Thank you. So nobody's happy with the way that this is all working. But what we can do is we can try to mitigate it, like I said, and that's what we've been doing. This law, as far as this ordinance and the changes to it, are not changing the actual law. It's strictly, all it's doing is clarifying it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this is the law that's been in existence already, already. It's not changing. It is the same thing. It's just spelling it out more. So this way, it's known and there's no complication. There is no back and forth that goes on and the police and code can actually point to it and say, this is what it says. And I believe that's the purpose for this. Am I correct?
That was the purpose.
Okay. Trying to make their jobs a little bit easier because they've had a difficult time of it dealing with certain residents in trying to, with an argument going back and forth and not being able to address things the way that they need to be addressed.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. DeRosa, I will, this will be my last time for me being able to shout out the audience. We have to have order. We have, there's a way that we do things and I'm going to ask that you respect it and not just call out from the audience. That will be my last time asking you to not shout out from the audience. Was that all you had to say?
I just, I'll wrap it up and I'll be done. Okay. So I think that the people that I have spoken with that are in this audience tonight and some that are not, some that are probably watching, when we talked about this, we all did kind of agree that this is really not as big of a problem as it's being made out to be. It's just clarifying the language. The bigger problem is something that has to be addressed in Tallahassee, not something that we can address here. And I would encourage all of you, I would encourage all of you to write to the governor, write to your legislatures. Let them know that this is something that you're upset about because that's the only way that something is going to change as far as that's concerned. We can do what we can to try to help you. We are trying to do what we can to try to help you. And I know, I appreciate Vicki's comments. We had a long talk over the weekend about this. And, you know, that is something that can be done. I did the exact same thing that you did, by the way. The one that's right, like two doors down from me, they were having parties on a regular basis. That's the one I had a call on. And the owner actually called me and we had a nice long talk about it. And I gave him some suggestions about how he could change his contract so that this wouldn't happen again because he didn't like getting a fine and he got a fine. So, and actually now he's changed it and he's turned it into a long-term rental as opposed to a short-term rental. So sometimes just having communication, not aggressive or adversarial communication, but just trying to talk to your neighbors, which is what we all did. We've all grown up doing, everybody did it for many years and we all seem to get away from that now. But if you can just talk to the people that own these properties and see if they'll work with you. And if they won't, then call code. You know, call the non-emergency number for BSO. They will come out, they will address it. They will do the best they can with it within the confines of the law. And again, this is not changing the law. It is simply clarifying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Audience, I do understand this is a hot button issue, but we will keep the respect and the decorum of this chamber and let people speak one at a time. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
It's public, well, I didn't close it officially. I did not close it officially. And so ma'am, you can come up and ask one question if you'd like. But you need to come all the way up and I need you to state your name and address for the record and then I will, I will close public comment. I need you to pull the microphone down a little, just a little bit.
My name is Carol Romanello. I live on 403 Southeast Ford Street. Now, I live next door to one. My neighbor two is here with me. I want to know if, how you check on the owner. Now, I know there's supposed to be five. Well, this guy next, we really never talked to him and I don't know who he is. But he has people there two days, one day, three days. One day there was a party. One party at night, no noise. But we had 36, 40 cars parked all over the neighborhood. All right, the cops came there and they got rid of the, who checks on the owners of these rentals? Is there, now, we know he had fines. This one that we think owns, we don't know who owns it now today. I have no idea who, but I know he had tons of fines. As we call it, uptime for the garbage, for the trash and for, you know, noise and stuff. But who checks on the owners?
City Attorney, if you could address that, please.
Sure. So there's a whole checklist of things that have to be done and there's an annual registration. So.
What I heard he never paid for his, don't they have to pay a fee?
There's, well, there's several things you have to do. You have to get a certificate of use. You have to get a BTR, which is a business tax receipt. And then you have to get your vacation rental certificate. The vacation rental certificate requires an inspection of the property. There is a site plan associated as to where the beds are, the parking, et cetera. And the the, it requires an annual inspection to make sure that everything is working. So in other words, there are no electrical outlet issues. There's the air conditioning is running, that the premise is in good shape. Because we don't want people coming and then getting hurt. That's the concept of it. And that is done annually.
I just heard her say that if they have so many fines, you eliminate it.
That is correct.
Well, I don't know. This, I'm like the person.
What is the address?
What's the address? 403 Southeast Ford Street.
103?
403.
I'm apologist. Southeast.
Not your address, the address of the Airbnb. Oh, his, what's that? That address, his, the address is 5045.
405? Southeast.
Southeast?
4th Street.
Yeah. I know in the beginning, yeah, one day, two days, three days. Very seldom someone's there the whole week.
Thank you for voicing your concern and asking your question and being respectful. At this time, we're going to go to, sir, I'm going to close the public comments at this time for right now. I'm going to move on to commission. Commissioner, Vice Mayor, hold on, Vice Mayor Salvino is next and we will move on. Hold on.
Is she sleeping?
Who said that, baby?
I'm not sleeping, believe me. Thanks, thanks, Billy. I love you too. Okay, I'm up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'll give her a finish time to talk to each other and then I'll talk.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
This, whether this ordinance passes or whether this ordinance doesn't pass, listening to every, listening to everything that goes on between the very few pros and a lot of cons that are out there. It's going to be so hard for anybody to monitor everything that goes on in the house. My family comes down and wants to rent an Airbnb and they want to bring their fam, the rest of my family when I want to go visit my family. You're telling me I can't do it. But then I would say probably the majority of the time, the people that come down here are not here for their family that lives here. They're here for themselves. And when they're here for themselves, they're here to have a good time. But you don't know if they're, I would tell you that I would say that 85 to 95% of the Airbnbs that are out there now, that there is always more than 10, 12, 15 people there. You just don't know it. And you don't know it because they're probably more respectful than anybody else that's out there and out there. You always have the bad people and we always have you city complainers. So it's a fight between the city complainers. It's a fight between people that don't have respect for you. And what happens is it's a small circle that we continually fight. And that circle has to do with the residents that live next to the Airbnb and then the Airbnb owners that don't have respect for the people that put in or don't care. Then goes to our law enforcement officers that have to struggle to try to maintain it because there's all over. They have other things that are dubious that are really criminal. They take care of like with the chief spoke today about all the rest they made at the post office. And those are very important things and guns and so on and down to the code enforcement that runs crazy. So no matter what happens out there, it's never going to be contained. I don't know what everybody's looking for to get done because you're arguing, I can almost promise you that the people that live in these houses, I mean, the people that you, you residents living in these houses, I assure you that you don't say a word to the police or anybody else, if there's 20 people in the house, as long as you don't hear them or they don't create a problem. But as soon as, but as soon as there's a problem, it becomes a problem overall. So whether there's 10 people, 15 people or 20 people, it doesn't make a difference if they're doing the right thing. So what we come down to is whether this ordinance is in effect, it's not going to make a difference. It's not going to make a difference if we keep it the same way it is or we add 10 more people to it. Because it's all going to boil down to the bad people. Simple. It's going to boil down to the resident that doesn't like it next door. He has to call the police. So honestly, I think, you know, changing it's not a big deal. Leave it the way it is, not a big deal. I mean, I don't understand it. I mean, if the state is the problem, you know, because they don't, they allow it. And this Airbnb is a losing proposition to everybody except for the people that are collecting the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Airbnb, it's always a hot topic here in the city. I live across from an Airbnb as well. I'm sure a lot of people can relate to that in this city. Dania Beach is really not a HOA community. We don't have many HOAs in Dania Beach, Northeast, Southeast, Southwest, Northeast, Northwest. They're, they're, I know there's a few, but I'm saying in general, okay? But it's not, Dania Beach is not known to be an HOA community. Therefore, we can't control Airbnb, short-term rentals. We can't eliminate short-term rentals, right? That's the only way you can eliminate a short-term rental. And when you look at the past of Dania Beach, they actually did a very good job, like 2018, correct, Eve?
Our ordinance was before 2012.
Is before 2012. Okay, yeah. So the ordinance that we created before we were preempted by the state of Florida, put us in an advantageous position to have more control over Airbnbs than other municipalities throughout South Florida. We, we have more control and we actually lead by example when it comes to Airbnb. Believe it or not, when you look to other cities, some other cities look to us on what we've done. The same thing what we've done with our noise ordinance also. And we can't, like I said, we can't ban Airbnbs. So we're not addressing, I hear what the residents are saying. There's a lot of the speakers that are coming up and they're telling us of the typical issues that come with Airbnbs. But tonight, we're not addressing trash. We're not addressing traffic and we're not addressing noise or individual violators. We have those ordinances in place already. Tonight, what we're discussing is we're clarifying the language that no more, the minimum day, minimum stay of five days, which I want to touch on that, the minimum stay of five days, the fact that we can control it and stop it before it even gets rented and we could find violators, I think that is going to control a lot of these out of control parties that have been going on because not a lot of people are going to want to rent it for five days just for the weekend. So I think that once we get that under control, I think that will have an impact and make a big difference. Now, the 10-person occupancy, I could understand, all right? It sounds like a lot of people, but we do have some large houses here in Dania Beach and some people do rent Airbnbs, multiple families. But you can't have more than two occupants in a bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Can't have more than two occupants in a bedroom. So, you know, if I would suggest any, I'm not even sure if we're allowed to do this. Just what I would say is there can't be more than 10 occupants after 11 o'clock. You know, to go along with our noise ordinance. And that would be, that would be my suggestion, but everything else. This, this is here to clarify the language. So our code enforcement and our police officers can enforce the rules to improve the quality of life for our residents. I know everybody here is coming up saying, I don't like Airbnb, Airbnbs, I don't like short-term vacation rentals. I want them gone. But we can't make them go away. What can we do? We can control them to the best ability that the city can and the authority and the power that we have. And I appreciate our city attorney's work on this. I appreciate the city residents for coming out and discussing this matter. It's a, it's an issue that is faced everywhere, especially here in South Florida. So basically what I'm saying is this is improving our quality of life in Dania Beach. And that would be my one amendment that I would make is no more than 10 occupants after 11 o'clock, which is our noise ordinance where it can't go past your property line. And that's, that's it.
Is that your official motion? Can I?
City Attorney?
Terrell, I don't, I don't want any more outbursts from the crowd because this is ridiculous.
So if between the two proposed possible actions, I would recommend taking the Commissioner Ryan's request for after 11 PM only because enforcement is something that we need to be able to do. And we can't have code just out there all day, running behind a few Airbnbs or vacation rentals. They have to do, cover the entire city. And we shouldn't be paroling everybody's occupancy at a pool or a volleyball game or whatever, you know, at somebody's house. So my recommendation would be the adding it, striking my sentence and adding after 11 PM.
With the noise ordinance. And that's what Commissioner Ryan said. So to, to have the Airbnb occupancy no more than 10 and then after 11 PM. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. So we have Commissioner Ramoni. You have other comments?
Well, you know, my original motion was to limit it to 10, the number 10. I am in agreeance with Commissioner Ryan that we defined it as 11 PM. I just want to remind everybody, we all live in Dania Beach. We all have neighbors. Some of us live next to Airbnbs. I don't, I think what's going to happen, and I hope it doesn't happen, there are going to be certain residents, they're going to be counting people going into doors. That's, let's not do that. You know, honestly, we have ordinances out here to protect us for various different things. Too many cars in parking lots, too many cars on the swale, noise. If someone has, like, as a resident, I have Sunday night dinner. I have 15, 20 people at my house. But we're indoors having family dinner. And I know it's a resident, it's not an Airbnb. But I think that we need to just be respectful to all. And keep in mind that if you do live next to an Airbnb or near one, don't count the number of people unless it becomes a noise issue or it becomes a parking issue. Then I think it's, you have legitimate concerns. But if they're quiet and they have 15 people in there, how is that bothering you? It really comes down to being good neighbors and being respectful. So I would like to second the motion that I can't do that.
You can accept his amendment.
Accept the amendment to my original motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will just touch on this briefly. I want to thank the residents for coming out and expressing your opinion in the different ways that you all are so passionate about your neighborhoods and protecting them. And I believe in addition to safety, I would say that's our number one priority, but it's always quality of life. And any decision that we make, it should. And any decision that we make, it should go back to the first question, how is this decision improving our residents' quality of life? Uh, our first responsibility is to you, we are elected to serve you, and so, uh, we, we don't, we always want to be moving in a situation or in the direction of improving what makes your life uh, qual- quality in the city of Dana Beach. So, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have, no, we have an amendment, so now I need a second, and do we have one from Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, I will second it with, with the amendment.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes, item twelve point one.
For clarification, Mayor, if I may, there was nobody in opposition of this vote, correct? Everybody said aye.
Unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, you, oh, you were.
By your stating no, in opposition, okay, so it's four to one. May, I, may, the item passes Mayor.
Four to one. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and City Clerk in Commission. All right, moving on, we are moving on to item twelve point two. Uh, Eve, would you please read item twelve point two?
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, to amend chapter twenty-seven and tell water and sewer of the city's code of ordinances by amending article two Water Use and Water Shortage Regulations to amend the title to Water Use Landscape Irrigation and Water Shortage Regulations as a subpart B for Water Use Landscape Irrigation Regulations, and amending section twenty-seven dash forty-three permanent restrictions for lawn and landscaping irrigation to modify the hours of use of sprinklers and irrigation to twelve AM to six AM, six PM to eleven fifty-nine PM, twice a week, providing for conflicts codification and an effective date. This is a Commissioner Ramoli item. Um, I drafted the ordinance for Commissioner Ramoli, I just wanted to say, basically, our code is nine to nine now, nine PM to nine AM. It's basically changing it to six PM to six AM so that the sprinklers are not on when kids are going to school, and they don't have to walk in the street. They could be walking on the sidewalk instead and not get wet.
Okay.
Commissioner, it's your item, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
All right, this is a public hearing. Do you have anyone to speak for or against this item? Sign nine, Vice Mayor Salvino.
Make a motion, pass the item twelve point two.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, let's just call it to a vote. Absolutely. Hold on. Commissioner Ryan?
Just have a question, since we're probably not going to discuss this, you know, uh, after today. Uh, Eve, is there a way where you can, um, direct a homeowner not to have their sprinkler spraying in the sidewalk? Right? You know, because there's sprinklers that just cover half the area.
Um, I guess we could try and do that, I, I, you know, I think it's hard to police that.
That's hard, okay. I was just, I was, that was my question, I'm, I'm for the item, but that was my question.
But my comment is just that it's just hard to police the sprinklers in the times, period. You know, it's just hard to say it's six o'clock, and then everybody's going to be calling and saying it's after six o'clock, you got your wa- sprinklers on. To me, I, 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 I just can't support, is, is, I know it's just a change of hours, and we already had it in place, but just for me, when you start policing people's sprinklers, the time they turn them on, the time they turn them off, it's, it's just too much. And so I'm just not in favor of this type of policy, period. So it really has nothing personal to do with the hours, but it's just one more added thing that people, neighbors are going to start policing neighbor sprinkler, and I, I'm just not here for it. So, um, Laura, if you could call that to a vote, please.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'm not on. Oh, I am on, okay, yes.
Commissioner Ramoli?
Yes, and I might add, uh, folks, this was brought to me by an actual student. And we love the fact that we're, our residents get involved, because it is an issue, it's so wonderful for us to be able to do something about it. Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Here, the motion carries, four to one.
Thank you, City Clerk. If we could move on then to item thirteen point one, discussion impossible action. City Attorney, if you could please read item thirteen point one.
Yes, ma'am. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement for a public art installation located CW Thomas Park with Paducci LLC for the amount of fifty-five thousand, which exceeds the annual vendor threshold of fifty thousand, providing for conflicts and an effective date. This is a community development item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Eleanor Arena, Community Development Director. So this is, uh, like the city attorney said, a public art installation for the new CW Thomas Park facility. The park's director, um, worked with the Public Art Board and chose an artist from the artist roster that was approved by Commission recently. And then she chose Paducci. These are some examples of public art that they have done. Um, they're very animal oriented. Um, they use a lot of mosaic, mosaic glass, concrete. Um, so let me just go into the project details. Um, the design con- concept was to represent the Dana Beach Dolphins football team at the facility. Uh, the artist is Paducci, as I said. The description of the work is two dolphins on top of a wave for the city of Dana Beach. Um, the dolphins are constructed of steel and pigmented concrete and covered with iridescent glass from Italy, of course, it's from Italy. It's, the size of this sculpture is eight feet tall, five foot in depth, and twelve, I'm sorry, eight foot wide, five foot in depth, and twelve feet tall. The budget was fifty-five thousand dollars, and it was budgeted from the CW Thomas Project Fund. So there was a line item within the budget for the, um, new facility to install public art. And maintenance is a very simple soap, water, and, um, a brush if it gets too dirty, and they'll do. So this is the design, the proposal that was approved, um, by the park's director and the Public Art Board recommend, uh, recommended approval. As you can see, it's two dolphins on top of a wave. The dolphins are the, um, wrapped in iridescent glass. This is what it would look like in front of the new facility. As you can see, it's about twelve feet tall, the, the building behind it's about almost nineteen feet tall um, for the entrance of the CW Thomas Park. I'm here, if you have any questions, staff is recommending approval of this item.
Yes, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes. So first of all, I like it, it's very pretty, very nice, and I like the dolphins because it's Dana Beach Dolphins, it's really good. I have a question, though. You said it is covered in glass. How is that about breakage? I just worry about accidents, and, you know, anything could happen, and.
So it's not a piece of glass, it's little pieces of mosaic glass that are attached to a concrete structure, it's very solid, yes.
I feel better about that now, thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner? Anyone else discussion on this item? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Ramoli?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. All right. Item passes unanimously, great job. Thank you, Eleanor, thank you to the Public Art Advisory Board, fantastic job. It's going to be absolutely beautiful addition to our city and to CW Thomas Park. All right, um, item thirteen point two, CGI banner program. Maxine, are we able to get our guest? Were we able to get in touch with our, yep, there she is, all right, Miss Nikki Carroll. Uh, this is an item, uh, that I'm bringing forward, it's one of the resources that, um, I was introduced to at the US Conference of Mayors, and so, uh, this is, uh, as you will hear from Miss Nikki Carroll, this is something that is used by the US Conference of Mayors, the National League of Cities, and so forth. So at this time, uh, Miss Carroll, if you could, uh, begin your presentation on the CGI banner program.
Hello, thank you all for having me, I so appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be here and share this program with you. Um, we think it's a great fit for your community. Um, the slide deck that you're going to be reviewing today is being controlled by somebody with you, not with me, so I will say the word next each time we need to go to the next slide, and I'm going to thank you right now for each one of those, um, changes that you'll make on my behalf, thank you so much. Um, so I'll start with the very next slide, if you don't mind. Um, a little bit about CGI, my company that I work with, we've been in business for thirty years. We work, you can just click on the side of the screen, it should just automatically go if you click to the right. Just click on the, anywhere on the picture, yep, there you go, perfect. Um, so we've been in business for thirty years doing cost-free marketing programs for communities like this one, this is one of a few different cost-free programs we offer. Um, we work with over five thousand communities on this program, and fifty thousand businesses through these programs as well. Next slide, please. We are endorsed by the nation's top organizations that represent communities, so that includes the National League of Cities, the United States Conference of Mayors, and the National Association of Counties. Um, these entities endorse our company, they endorse our programs because they believe they provide such value to their members, which are communities just like yours. Um, on the next slide, you'll see, uh, that this program is one about banners. This is a cost-free decorative street banner program. Um, this is a major priority of ours for two reasons. One, uh, there is a huge body of evidence that demonstrates the significance and the impact of community beauty on both the city and the residents within it. It's something that's requested from our partners and non-partners as well all the time, they are interested in banner programs specifically. And we have a major celebration coming up, the upcoming two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, which is a national celebration that this banner program, um, can be used for communities across the country to get involved in. Um, if you look at the next slide, you'll see that the product we're providing is a high-quality, durable, double-sided vinyl banner. It is the highest quality banners we can find in the market, they're beautiful, custom size, we can do any size that you need. Um, and they are professionally designed for you based on your preferences. On the next slide, you'll see some examples of some banners that we've done for participating communities. Some communities do welcome to their city with their logo and their colors, some communities highlight an initiative, an award, a call to fame. On the next slide, you'll see some examples of some anniversary banners, um, these ones specifically for the upcoming two-hundred-and-fiftieth of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, this is a national campaign. We do have a lot of communities that will also celebrate local anniversaries, so, um, a centennial of the, uh, incorporation of your community is always a great cause. On the next slide, you'll see an example of a strategic campaign by a community utilizing this program for wayfinding, district identification, neighborhood identity, creating a functional purpose of these banners beyond simple beautification. On the next slide, you'll also see some examples of artists that were featured on these banners in local communities, so muralists, graphic designers, painters, residents, students, um, each of the banners here you'll see were designed in some way, shape, or form by somebody local within the community they're representing. So, um, very honored to come after that last beautiful presentation of that dolphin. Um, you obviously have some amazing talent in your community, if you want to incorporate them into the designing of these banners, that would be more than welcome. Um, however, you do have access to a full team of professionals with this program, as you'll see in the next slide, just a few more examples of, of projects we've done. Uh, we make it our priority to bring your vision to life without any restrictions, meaning that we won't cap you on the number of edits or the number of designs you can have in your display. And we also empower you to think about this program long-term. As you see on the next slide, there's a, a timeline for this in which we update the banners every twelve months. We do this for two reasons. As you can imagine, in sunny Florida, uh, ink can fade if it's in the sun and the rain and the wind over a period of months. After about eighteen months, we do start to see deterioration on the banner, being that it is a physical product. So as a part of our campaign, we replace the banners for you every twelve months to ensure they're always beautiful, they're never aging and looking not so nice on your polls. Um, so this quality issue is addressed. Equally important is the redesign each and every year, because your priorities change as a community, as different relevant events or festivities happen. Um, as you have a different administration initiative or a celebration to incorporate into the design, you can do so each and every year and reprioritize how this program serves you. Um, on the next slide, I'll start talking about our business model, our business model is the same for all of our programs. The way that it works is we partner with a local community, offering our services to our community partner completely. Out of context, we've worked with over five thousand communities, not a single one of our communities has ever been charged dissent for working with us in our programs. Our programs are one hundred percent cost-free to the communities we partner with. The way that we stay in business is we create opportunities for your local businesses to get involved and sponsor our programs, if they want to, and only if they want to. The really great thing about our programs is that there's no contingency. As you'll see on the next slide, any community that signs up for this program is guaranteed to get twenty-five banners, regardless of the success of the sponsorship campaign. If businesses get involved, great, if they don't, we pay for you to have banners anyways, making sure that no matter what happens, you get a beautiful display. Quite frankly, if they don't get involved, it's not your problem, and we pay out of our own pocket. Um, however, we do anticipate quite a successful initiative when we offer this opportunity to a community to participate. And the reason why we see such a high rate of success is because businesses love this program. They love the opportunity to support their city, but they also get to get their name out there and compete with larger businesses and corporations in ways that are cost-effective and affordable. As you'll see in the next slide, the businesses themselves are featured in the bottom section of the banner. There are different ways to feature them, as you can see in the left, uh, there's a little bit more, um, variation in terms of the businesses because they're each featured with their given marketing font, their specific branded font. You'll see that the banner, um, kind of doesn't separate the business from the overall design of the banner. You also see some include visuals, like a logo, um, maybe even a tagline, like celebrating seventy-five years, things like that, being a little bit more, um, uh, creating a little bit more generosity in that sponsor section. However, a lot of communities have a prof- a specific aesthetic preference or policy that makes it so that way they need to be a little bit more streamlined with the sponsor section, and that's totally fine with us. So you'll see on the right, the sponsor section is segregated from the rest of the banner. Each of the sponsors are formatted in the exact same way with the exact same fonts, there are no logos, there are no taglines. So it is up to you to decide how those businesses are featured. As you'll see on the next slide, regardless of what direction you go, they end up being beautiful. You get the benefit of supplying your local businesses with an amazing opportunity to get in front of foot traffic, holiday shopping, festivals and event, events, tourists, Airbnb visitors, all of those amazing, uh, things that your community has and can take advantage of with those business communities, while also having your local city get the benefit of a beautiful banner campaign without having to really invest a lot of city time or financial resources. Additionally, in this program, as you'll see in the next slide, we want to make this a comprehensive program where you don't have to do a lot of work to ensure that this, oh, next slide again, sorry, one more. Um, we'll ensure that this program, uh, is something that we take care of start to finish for you. Installation and maintenance, we contract out somebody local, put some dollars back into your community, take that off your plate, make sure to manage that so your public works department doesn't have to be burdened with another project. We also provide all needed bracketing and hardware, we can provide you with extra strength bracketing and hardware for any sort of wind issues. Um, and we're, uh, providing that as needed, if you have existing hardware that you want to use, we can absolutely do that, but this is provided as an option. And then we also insure every banner, so if we put all your banners up, and then two weeks later, a crazy windstorm comes through and you lose half of them, we will replace them all for free. They're covered for the entire twelve months of display until we replace them, and then the next twelve months, they're covered once again. On the next slide, you'll see that an additional part of our program is that we provide, uh, some community organizations with cost-free banners for them to celebrate and get involved as public servants, so your fire department, your police department, the city itself would be sponsors, and I say sponsors in quote because they're not paying for anything, this is a donated banner to these organizations from our company. On the next slide, you'll see a list of four things. These four things are what we ask in exchange for all of this, so if ultimately the city decided to move forward, there are four things we would request of you. One, to qualify, you have to have twenty-five poles for this program, you need to have, uh, um, them identified for us, so tell us where you want these banners to hang. They don't all have to be in the same area, you could do ten in one area, fifteen in another, but twenty-five is the minimum, um, there is no maximum quantity. The second thing is the direction for the artwork, we do ask that you give us your vision, give us feedback on designs, and we will request a formal approval before we print anything. Uh, we'll ask for a letter of introduction for the business outreach, we do all of the business outreach ourselves, being sure to educate the businesses on the opportunity for you, but we don't want to narrate the program for you, we don't want to put words in your mouth. So the best way we found to introduce ourselves to businesses is to have our city partners draft a letter explaining our partnership, how you feel comfortable. Narrate the program, whatever makes way, makes sense to you. I have supplied a template for the mayor to consider. Um, if you want to throw that in the garbage and start from scratch, I will not be offended. Whatever makes you happy is fine with us, this is your opportunity to control how you position the partnership. The final thing we would ask of you is that you sign up on a one-page agreement. The agreement says two things, it says we'll do everything, and we'll do it for free, basically. The next slide that you'll see is a list of everything that I've mentioned today, it's a program summary. The agreement that the mayor also has, the formal agreement, lists all of these things out in, in a much more. The agreement that the mayor also has, the formal agreement, lists all of these things out in a much more formal and legal based way. But this is essentially the entirety of the program start to finish. The last slide, if you'd like to go to it, but feel free to stay here, is my contact information. If anybody has questions or anything they need to reach me about in the future, my contact information is readily available. But I will ask that the program summary remain on the screen for any questions that I can answer. And it's my pleasure to stay on and address them as you, as long as you need.
Thank you, Ms. Carol, for that thorough presentation. This came about because I were, we're looking or I was thinking about the twenty twenty six where it is this nation's two hundred and fiftieth birthday anniversary. And so a lot of cities are taking advantage of this cost free banner program. And so that's why it's not under a procurement issue because of the, the cost free nature of the program. So with that, I will open it up for discussion, Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So you're saying cost free. And I'm still trying to understand how that works. Is it, are you going through businesses and advertising, doing advert, getting ads from them?
The businesses are featured in the bottom section of the banner and the businesses pay to participate in the program if they so wish. The cities that we partner with receive all of our services completely for free. So the cost free nature of the program is in the relationship between our company and your community. The community receives every service completely for free. If the businesses get involved, they do so through paid sponsorship. However, like I said in the presentation, there's no contingency. So say we reach out to every single business in your city, offer them the opportunity to sponsor a banner. And let's say that every single business in your city tells us no. If that happens, we pay out of our own pocket for you to have twenty five banners. We give them to you completely for free and that's the end of it. We still do all of the things we promised we would do, install, maintain, ensure, all of that. All the risk is on us.
Is, is there a cost above twenty five? Like if there were, so like, let's say we wanted fifty?
Yeah. So what we do in the case where, let's say that you had a max quantity through the program of twenty five banners and you wanted an additional twenty five to get to fifty, we would supply you with the raw files for the artwork. So that way you could print those locally at the most competitive rate you feel comfortable and ensure that you manage those above and beyond banners on your own to get the display that you so desire. So we will continue to maintain those twenty five while you can maintain above and beyond that at the fifty number, if that's the number we're working with right now. However, in a community of your size, we do anticipate usually between forty and sixty banners for businesses in a community of your size.
So are you doing business in any other Florida cities right now?
Plenty, yeah, actually. Yes, many. Temple Terrace, Longwood, Florida. Gosh, I work with the whole country. So that's just off the top of my head, two examples.
Okay, FDOT doesn't have any issue with you putting advertisements for businesses on banners?
So permissions is something that we work with the communities on. It depends on the poll location. So sometimes the polls are owned by the city itself and the permitting and permissions just goes through the local city government. Sometimes they're owned by a utility company. That could be state, that could be a municipal utility. And that is sometimes a permitting process and an application, which I'm happy to assist with and have a lot of experience doing. I haven't run into any issues with state and I didn't quite hear the organization you said. But usually in each community, the location determines the ownership. You might have three different owners within your given borders of your city, different owners owning each pole and the permissions are things that we figure out with the city.
We have a lot of that. And I was saying Florida Department of Transportation is who I was asking about.
Great, yes. No, we haven't run into issues with them.
Okay, because I didn't think they allowed advertising. So I'm going to ask, let me just ask through the mayor to the manager. We are, we already have a company that does banners for us, correct?
That is correct.
And they change them out every quarter?
That is correct.
For different things?
Yes, a hundred and twentieth, and we do Memorial, Flag Day and Fourth of July.
Do you know if they were planning on doing anything for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country?
They, they will do whatever we direct them to do, but we pay them. Yeah, that's correct. We do have a budget for them.
Do you know how much we're paying?
I, I don't know. I, off the top of my head, but I can get you that information.
Do you know how many banners we have?
We've, we, for the holidays, we put them in, in major thrift stores. I would probably have to say in, in excess of fifty, sixty, eighty banners. Would you say Fernando? Yes. Close to a hundred, actually.
Close to a hundred, yeah. I thought it was more. Okay, those are the little questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and just for clarification, would, what, what is the regulation? Do we have any regulations? So if there was a particular business, we wouldn't want to necessarily have advertised on the banners. Not all businesses are, you know, what we would want to have on our cities. So just want to know that, you know, we, we would have the final choice or selection and, and be able to prohibit certain businesses or say, you know, this isn't in alignment with what we would want to see around our city.
Absolutely. So by default, our company is apolitical, so we do not allow political messaging, campaigns, anything of the sort. Candidates would never be allowed to participate in our program. We also consider ourselves family friendly, so no gentlemen's clubs, adult stores, pawn shops, all of the like. Sometimes we have communities like Colorado would be a great example where marijuana is legal on the state level. But certain communities tend to lean conservative and they prefer no marijuana dispensaries sponsoring their banners. That's entirely fine with us. We have some communities that might be just wanting to, to restrict other types of businesses for whatever specific reason. And we absolutely adhere to that. What we say is our partnership is with the city that we partner with. We work for you. Your preferences are our preferences. We're happy to adopt those as our own.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni.
Yes, can you repeat? How often do you replace or change the banners?
Every twelve months.
Okay, so if we had a program in place here where we change them out quarterly or during holidays? Or is that something you would do on our behalf?
So some communities will choose to do a holiday display in addition to this banner campaign. So the way that that normally looks is like if we did the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, for example, from January to let's say the end of November, the two hundred and fiftieth banner would hang and then the Christmas banner would go up. In those instances, we only request that we're able to identify the times for how long the sponsored banners come down. So that way the businesses know upfront what they're getting for their investment. So the concern we have is that we promised them twelve months, they get eleven months, then it's like a bait and switch. Not a good feeling, sales tactic kind of thing. So we want to be very communicative with the business that they're getting X amount of time of display for their investment. When it comes to a seasonal display, we do have options for that, but we find it's not, something cities tend to go with, not super conducive to our program. The reason being is that we believe that the constant updating of the banners each year allows for a fresh aesthetic downtown. It also, the way that we have it set up, it doesn't put undue burden on the businesses to have to sponsor multiple banners at a higher cost. It keeps the cost low for them. So yes, it is possible to do seasonal. I don't recommend it. Certainly something we can explore if that's a strong preference for your community.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
And last question for me, you can just regulate them to certain districts, certain areas, like if there was an arts, you know, theme or something that we wanted to specifically. And so I just wanted you to just talk about like an example that you've seen specifically for a particular area and then.
Yeah, my favorite example of that is this, gosh, I cannot remember the name of the community, but they had a, a medical district. And the way that the road in the medical district, it was like a hospital with a bunch of doctors' offices and other such things. It looked like the spine of a human's back, like the spine. So they called, they branded it the medical spine and we did a whole design about like the spine shape, the aesthetic of like the road, branding that area as the medical spine of the community. So it was a really great campaign to identify this like medical district. We've done other campaigns where like in Rochester, New York, they have like a popular street called Park Ave, branding it as such so you know where you are. We've done veteran parks to designate specific like momental monumental areas, things like that in order to really identify specific things that make your community unique and, and use these in a purpose that's additional in beautification, something like wayfinding or creating that sense of place. In terms of like where the banners can go, that's entirely up to you. You decide where the banners are going to hang. We have no, I don't want to say control over that, but that's your prerogative. You decide where you want these to hang. And in fact, if you wanted to continue to do your existing banner campaign, let's say maybe on your main street, and then you wanted to use this program in a medical spine area, a downtown, a commercial district where you might feel it's more appropriate, you can continue to do your existing banner campaign on your main street with the rotational seas of seasonal banners and then use this program elsewhere so you can cover more of your community with beautification. So that's an option as well. You know, think of this program as an addition to what you already do to expand it without adding more worker finances.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. At this time, it's very thorough. You obviously know this program like the back of your hand. And so I appreciate that and I appreciated learning about it at the conference. At this time, I'm seeking consensus from the commission to move forward as far as giving Eve the direction to go ahead and bring back all the information as far as contract and all of that to move forward with the banner program, but to decide location and all of that, that we would actually come back to bring that on an agenda for approval. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Ramoni.
Well, for me, I wouldn't want to put the cart before the horse. I, I would like to engage in some conversation, maybe through our workshop, to talk about how we would want to implement this into our city because we currently have a program with holidays and seasons and, and I love that idea. I also love free, F R E E, I love that. So I don't want to discount that, but I think we probably just need to talk about this a little bit more. I would love to continue to pursue this. This is a great idea. And I'm really happy that you brought this back from the Conference of Mayors. I think it's something we should consider very strongly, but I'd like to talk about it a little bit more.
So you want to hold off on it and get, and be able to give specific direction about where.
How we can use it, maybe it's a small number versus what we currently do. Maybe it's an art district or maybe it's, I don't know, we can just talk about how we might be able to utilize this program. But I'd certainly think that we, we should at some point down the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, or, or maybe we could use it to supplement things that we already have. That's the potential. Because my concern is once you get over twenty five, then we are going to have costs associated with it because we're going to have to find someone to print these out and put the banners together and put them up and that sort of thing. So there is still a cost, even though it's free, and I appreciate the free part, of course. And I'm glad you brought this to us, but I, there are costs that are associated with it as well. So I, that are part of that. So I, I agree. I would, I'd like to get a little more information and I'd like us to discuss a little bit more. And I'd, I'd also like to see how much we're paying right now for the banner program that we have, what it includes and so forth, and then maybe discuss the potential for if we had a, whatever the other company would be that prints them out. And I'm assuming, I'm assuming we would have to put them up because are we doing that now or do we have the company that puts them up?
The company puts them up.
Okay, so then we, we would end up having, I'm guessing, to have somebody from Public Works or somebody put them up. Is that what I'm understanding or am I wrong?
No.
They do it?
We do the install for our banners, correct? For every banner we provide you, we do all the installation, maintenance, hardware, insurance.
That's good. So that's less, but still amounts over the twenty five. I, I would like to kind of get a better handle on what that would be. So anyway, I just, I would like to see the whole thing analyzed a little more just so that we get a better sense of it. And then we can talk about it more, but I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I just, and it could be something that we could use to supplement.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm familiar with CGI by going to the Conference of Mayors and saying, kudos to you for getting them on the agenda. So I, I, I was definitely a fan of them and I was, I was mentioning it. This could be something, just a twenty five banner, something we could use down Danny Beach Boulevard on the beach, you know? It doesn't have to be community wide. We, it could focus on one particular area. And, you know, it's, it's a great company. I, I definitely concur. So thank you for bringing up this item. And yeah, definitely look forward to pursuing this further.
All right, so at this time, we are definitely, do we want to just take a vote on if we're going to move forward with it now? Or you guys have consensus to, you know, we want to move forward with the program. I think we just want the details and the specifics as to where, when, how we're going to supplement it. But I think that, you know, overall, we have consensus that we want to use the program in some capacity in some way. So we have consensus to move forward in a direction. We will get back with you with the specifics after we have our workshop and, and our strategic planning meeting and all of that good stuff. But I do thank you for staying up this late to do the presentation. And we look forward to moving forward and we'll just get some direction from the commission prior to giving you any more specific direction. But thank you so much for your presentation on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commission. Lovely to meet you.
Lovely to meet you as well. All right, where are we? We are now on item thirteen point three. Oh, September, oh, City Clerk, I did have. Oh, I have appointment. I have an appointment. Okay, okay, thank you. Item thirteen point three, City Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in the very beginning, when you approved your commission meeting dates, I had your second meeting in September to be determined based on the budget hearing meetings with the school board and just finding out what those dates look like. Working with Jamie, who's our soon to be CFO, she provided me with those dates that the school board will be meeting. So in, with those dates, we do have to change also your first meeting in September to abide with those dates. So the, the proposal we're bringing to you is to meet now on September fifteenth instead of the September ninth, which was the original date. So September fifteenth is a Monday. And then the second meeting in September would instead be the, I'm sorry, would instead be the twenty fifth in, versus the twenty third, and the twenty fifth is a Thursday. So those are the days that we are proposing for September in order to work around all of the other budget hearing dates and to meet advertising requirement deadlines and all of the.
And I believe also some religious holidays as well.
And yes, and there's a religious holiday that was thrown in there too, that kind of, we have to work around. Yes, the fifteenth of September, which is a Monday, and twenty fifth of September, which is a Thursday. Yes, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And that's, hold on. Would that be a CRA meeting day too or just?
Yes, we'd put, we'd move both, both over.
Well, the fifteenth would be your CRA and commission and then your first budget.
We have a public art advisory board meeting, so we'll see if we can reschedule.
We will definitely let them know so they can reschedule their meeting. Absolutely. And then the twenty fifth is just commission meeting and your second and final budget hearing.
That works. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And the mayor, your next item is the appointments, which I know we have two that just come up for the Dania Beach Housing Authority. And you have one that you'd like to nominate right now?
I do. I have Ms. Gail Jones to add to the Dania Beach Housing Authority. And she will take over Ms. Rosalyn Curry's current position as she has moved. And so that position became open and I believe I will have another one for you at the next commission meeting so we can have a full housing authority board.
Do I have consensus for that appointment? Thank you.
All right, moving on to commission comments, we will begin with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I just kind of want to reiterate what I said earlier today when we were at the Newburgh Swanson House, as the new pronunciation is. You know, I've been here now for six years and I remember when we hired our manager. And there were a number of things that we talked about, a number of things that we wanted to do and a number of things that were done very quickly and everybody was up in arms because it was all this change happening at once. And we, we were talking about projects that we were working on and things would be completed. And some of them taken longer than others. We had COVID in between there, which also delayed things. But I am really proud and pleased to see things coming to completion. The, the Newburgh Swanson House, for example, we're going to start work on the women's club. Lucky Fish is almost open. There are, the, the Southeast Rainage Project finally broke ground and is moving along very, very quickly. I'm, I'm hearing wonderful things from the residents in that neighborhood. Just so many things. And then, and, and actually finally paying attention to Griffin Road and out west, which is something I can see, Chrissy, right there. Something that wasn't done for many, many, many years and it's finally happening. So it's, it's just really nice to see things coming to completion and actually people being able to see results. It makes a big difference when you, when you see residents and you talk to people and you can talk about the things that were actually done, that we've made promises on and they happened. And I know that it, it has made a lot of people very happy to see that. The other thing that I wanted to say is, you know, we had a. Um, and I know that it, it has made a lot of people very happy to see that. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to say is, you know, we had a very um a little bit of a raucous group tonight. Um, and part of that's because there was information being put out there by people, certain people, that wasn't necessarily accurate, and I, I just want people to know and remind you all, because I said this to everybody what, that I talked to over the last week, because I talked to a lot of people, as I'm sure you all did as well. Go to the source. Ask, ask us. Ask our city attorney. Ask the people that are actually here doing this, and we'll tell you the truth. Um, uh, you know, I said to several people tonight, you know, you know me. Have I lied to you? I have not, and I will tell you the truth. And if you ask me, I'm gonna tell you what it's really all about. I don't have a problem with it. My, you know, open-door policy, just, you know, ask me a question. Now, there are times I'm gonna say, not now. But, you know, if we're out enjoying ourselves, you, you know, shopping, things like that, but, you know, just ask, and, you know, you'll get, you'll get the facts as opposed to somebody's opinion or somebody's agenda, or whatever it might be. And that's all I'm gonna say. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner uh Llewellyn, Commissioner Ramoli.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make this very short, because I'm gonna ditto everything uh Commissioner Llewellyn said. But I also, I, I just want to thank um our city staff, everyone who was responsible for that beautiful renovation of the Newburgh Swanson House, I guess. Um, it was beautiful and very, very nice. Um, I also just want to briefly say, and I'm sure the mayor will go into more detail, um, what a pleasure it was to represent our city uh with our mayor and our city manager in Tallahassee. It was quite an eye-opening experience for me. Um, it was a long day, but it was very productive, and I hope what, what we did up there accomplished what our goal was, and that is to bring money back here to our city to better enhance um our um infrastructure and our uh stormwater projects here. So again, thank you all very much for allowing me to go up there with you, and I really enjoyed it very much. And good night, everyone. Thanks for being out here, and thanks for all your comments and concerns. I know that we have our raucous group is left, but I'm hoping that uh whoever's listening out there uh realizes that we do value your opinion. You may not always agree with us, but we do value your opinions. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoli, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank, we're just taking forever, because we don't want you to leave yet. So I'm gonna take this real slow. No, thanks, Frank. Uh, really appreciate the time uh we, we had, and, you know, you're a great leader for the city. Wish you luck on your future endeavors, and Jamie, I know we're not gonna miss a beat with you. You're A-plus too, so uh good luck to Frank. Looking forward to Jamie's new leadership of the financial department. And today was, was wonderful with the Nyberg Swan- Newburgh Swanson House with the uh the ribbon cutting was awesome, and that was a long endeavor that went on before I was even elected. And doesn't that feel good, right? To, to restore history, guys? Come on, right? It feels good. It feels good. I know you guys feel it, and you felt it there. And there's a lot of people at the community out, and they were involved, and there was people that came from the Holiday Historical Society, from the Broward, uh yeah, from Fort Lauderdale, and uh, you know, obviously, our historical society got a big round of applause there. So there's one more house out there, rusticated brick. You know, they thought the Nyberg Swanson was the only one, but there's one more out there, and we're doing our best for it, and I appreciate the commission's support, and it, it's, it's just a, a special day. It feels like a historic day in Dania Beach when it comes to Nyberg Swanson, and uh we're definitely gonna advertise that and get it out there. So uh, appreciate everyone's efforts. Appreciate the community coming out tonight. I love them. We have a packed crowd. Uh, you know, for good or for bad, I just like people getting involved and wanting to see what's going on with the city. So thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Good luck, Frank.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for those comments, and now Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make one short comment to Commissioner Ryan. I think he needs to start a GoFundMe cage, page for the Historical Society. Joy, I don't look so sad. Um, no, I just, I don't have anything else to say. Everybody's said enough, and by the time it gets to me, we've all repeated ourselves, but uh, thank you very much for all the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I will try to keep it brief, because I, this has been a very long day, but a very productive day, and uh, you know, uh, things don't go perfectly, but at the end of the day, I am, I'm very um very happy and very pleased with so much that's going on around this city, in the city and outside of the city. We kicked off uh Black History Month with George Hadley Day and, and celebrating um Mr. Hadley and Jackson's Ice Cream. That then became part of the Sun Sentinel article, the Historical Society uh, you know, posted about that, and so it's, it's great to celebrate our history during Black History Month. It was great to celebrate our history for the Nyberg, Newburgh Swanson House. We're gonna get that. I was gonna take a minute, but we will uh get, get that new term correct, and so we celebrate all history, and so that's really what I believe our city does. We, we, we really are not just maybe Black History Month, but it's also, we're Broward's first city. We're celebrating our Danish history. We're celebrating everybody coming to our city and being one united, and I, and I can't wait to see the different things that we're going to be able to do in that house, and I know that there's gonna be so many creative ideas. I, I, in my head, I see schools being able to come in and learn about the history of Dania Beach and doing so many wonderful things, and so investing in our history, and it's so educational, and I, I'm just really, it's, it's great to see something start from the beginning to the end, and we're doing that on all cylinders. Um, I was here from the very beginning, choosing the Lucky Fish Restaurant, and, and to be able to go through the bidding process, the top restaurants, and then see all the red tape we had to go through, Eve, right, to get all of the permissions and the permitting, and finally, 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 we are going to um, have that restaurant open this month, and so uh we are so, we have so many things to celebrate, and I cannot say enough about our city manager and going out with Commissioner Ramoli, because it never fails that going out in person, I mean, we did meet with uh our, our, our regular, we've been cultivating relationships with the Speaker of the House and uh seeing that uh relationship flourish, and so many people touch points along the way that just keep uh making a difference in our city and in our community, and so I want to thank uh the city managers, twenty-eight years that you have been going, and so um it was my fifth year, my first as mayor, and, and I just really believe that that face-to-face experience um is, is, there is nothing like it. So I also want to shout out uh really quickly, because I just did talk about Lucky Fish, but I want to thank uh the entire team, marketing team. I want to thank uh specifically uh Cassie and Suzette, who, who helped me through this wonderful process of starting and the ma- uh, the manager for uh creating and helping to visualize the mayor on the move. We all collaborated and made it a, a huge success, and it's not due to one individual, but so many team members coming together. So I want to thank you all for having that team spirit and keeping us united. Even when we disagree, big or small, uh, we still come together at the end of the day, because we want the best for our city. So with that, our meeting is adjourned.